My own now. We'll get our meeting started today. It's good to have each and every one of you here and to see everybody. But before we say anything else, we get started, we'll do our openings. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tatum if he'll do the invocation, and then Mr. Jamison if he'll lead the pledge to the flag. Let's all stand, please.
Good to see everyone here today and on this beautiful day. I appreciate, we appreciate all of you coming out and taking part in county business at this time. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you and praising you for all you do for us, Lord. We thank you for giving us this beautiful day to be here and conduct the business for the citizens of Franklin County. Father, we ask you for wisdom and guidance and everything that we say and do and every decision that we make. And Father, we pray that we'll always seek to do your will. In Jesus' most holy and precious name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
Do the flag back in the United States of America. The free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do any of the members have any additions, amendments, or deletions to the agenda as it has been presented? Seeing none, if there's no changes to the agenda, then by voice, I'll oppose. By voice vote, all in favor of it standing as it is. Say aye. Any opposed? Surely there is none. Okay. Before we go any further, we've got a bunch of employees out here today that's gonna get a little award, and we're very, very appreciative to our employees. You guys are the ones that have made Franklin County what it is. The years of service that you've had presented, and you're gonna see, some of them have been fabulous. They have been long. And the dedication and the commitment to your county and to your service is, it's unmeasurable. And we really want you to know how much we appreciate it. Chris is gonna make a statement, then we're gonna pass out the awards. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna ask you, if you can, just to stand up here to the front so we can get pictures, and supervisors will be up here, and we want to take the time to recognize you for who you are, because you really are Franklin County, and we can't say enough for that. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do this annually, and it's also one of our favorite times of the year to recognize a lot of service that has gone into the Franklin County organization. On the fifth year anniversary, being this last year, these employees have reached their five-year milestones. And so, we have employees with service today of 45 years on down to five years of service. And so, I'm gonna need some help with staff. And Mr. Thompson, we may ask our chairman to join us down on the, near the podium. We're gonna ask our clerk, Maderlin Torres. Maderlin, if you will walk through these, and maybe if you will announce then each individual employee and the years of service that they have. We'll start with our full-time employees first, and again, tremendous amount of years of service. And so, Mr. Chairman, we'll get started. If you want to join myself and Maderlin down near the podium, and when we call your name, if you'll come forward, as the chairman has said, and just start lining up in front. I know the chairman wants to get a picture with you and members of the board here at the end of all the announcement of the names. So, Maderlin, if you or the mic, I think Phyllis Scott may be helping us here or some too. You can tell we've all got it together today, all polished. So, Mr. Thompson has noted that our clerk will call out the names, and if you'll come across, we'll line up along the front.
Shirley Reynolds.
It'd be good if they'd just come right through here and line up right here, wouldn't it? So, how you wanna do it?
I just wanna be sure they're in order.
Shirley Reynolds, 45 years of service. Margaret Torrance, 35 years of service. Kathy Palmieri, 35 years of service. Ricky Mullins, 25 years of service.
Ricky's.
Chad Austin, 25 years of service.
I was his training officer.
Eric.
That comes back all the time, too.
Eric Ingram, 35 years of service. Connie Stanley, 25 years of service. Rena Jennings, 20 years of service. Tim Radford, 20 years of service. Kathleen Pig, 15 years of service. Annie Tyree, 15 years of service. Sarah Patterson, 15 years of service. Michael Wilson, 15 years of service. Mark Tatum, 15 years of service. Jennifer Reynolds, 15 years of service. Patricia Barnes, 15 years of service.
She's nine.
Laurie Cantiff, 15 years of service. Leonard Ray, 15 years of service. Eric Mullin, 10 years of service. Paul Chapman, 10 years of service. Joanna Grantham, 10 years of service. Chad Sacra, 10 years of service. Homer Keith, 10 years of service. Joseph Wildridge, 10 years of service. Christopher Esposito, 10 years of service. Tiffany Fall, 10 years of service. Sandra Peck, 10 years of service. Donald Allen, 5 years of service. Callie Dungen, 5 years of service. Christopher Powell, 5 years of service. Joseph Knight, 5 years of service. Rebecca Granson, 5 years of service. Joshua Beavers, 5 years of service. Carol Forre, 5 years of service. Bridgette.
Sorry. I didn't see her.
Bridgette Thompson, 5 years of service. Morgan Merman, 5 years of service. Ashley Neese, 5 years of service. Mary Sappelneck, 5 years of service. Keith Holland, 5 years of service. Jonathan Scott, 5 years of service. Grant Wickline, 5 years of service. Brandon Brown, 5 years of service. Laura Blankenship, 5 years of service. Peggy Foley, 5 years of service. Randall Patterson, 5 years of service. Linda Wade, 5 years of service. Sharon Ingram, 5 years of service. Brad Elkins, 5 years of service. Kenesha Hodge, 5 years of service. Robert White, 5 years of service. Jessica Ford, 5 years of service. Michael Mormon, 5 years of service.
And that concludes the full-time service awards, and we have several part-time service awards, five-year awards. So, we'll start with our part-time.
Annette Brown, 20 years of service. Oh, I'm sorry, Annette Bowman, 20 years of service. Stephen Crook, 15 years of service. Darrell Perry, 15 years of service. William Akers, 15 years of service. Leon Robertson, 10 years of service. Gary Shively, 10 years of service. Jimmy Minix, 5 years of service. Tracy Shelton, 5 years of service. George Trail, 5 years of service. Oneida Mason, 5 years of service.
All right, wait. Look at me. Look at me, Oneida. I'm not shy. That's my girl.
William Marsh, 5 years of service. Thomas Arrington, 5 years of service. Richard Champagne, 5 years of service. David Lintecum, 5 years of service. Timothy Anderson, 5 years of service. Basil Divers, 5 years of service.
When you let 'em off.
Ronnie Radford, 5 years of service. Christina Stumpf, 5 years of service.
Thank you.
Well, we can scoot together just a little bit.
I don't know how much we can do that. And I'm gonna ask the supervisors, and they'll stand, and we'll take our pictures there. And again, and again, ladies and gentlemen, it's without y'all, we couldn't be where we're at today, and we appreciate it. Thank you a whole lot.
Sorry about that.
Hey. You're okay.
He's gonna get one, another one here.
Thank y'all so much, really.
Good to see you. Congratulations.
Hey, buddy. You are.
How do you think it makes us feel?
Exactly. Exactly. You know, when they called him, I was just training him. There is. We're gonna do the retirees. How many of them is, it's just, we're just gonna, I'm just gonna mention them by name. They're still in the room. They're calling in a business. They're not gonna reach you.
Patrick's here.
Is he talking to you?
Patrick.
Huh? Yeah.
Where'd Connie go?
Really? Really?
Chris, I don't think Connie.
Yeah. Phyllis, Phyllis been here long.
Oh, I think, I think, I don't think Phyllis is.
She's been here four years.
ones that, wow, I don't know what to say. We're getting ready to lose, we're getting ready to lose some people for retirement that have altogether, it's over 100 years, over a decade experience with Franklin County. That's a whole lot. That's a lot of experience we're gonna be losing. Miss Stanley, Connie Stanley, if you'll come forward, please. I'm gonna ask everybody to stand right up here. Forty-five years of service, 25 with the county, and (Applause) all 45 years has been with the county in the admin office and in social services. Forty-five years. Billy Ferguson. Is Billy here today? Billy started with the county when his hair was not white. Y'all didn't hear what Connie said. Kathy Hodges. Nineteen, nineteen years there. Then Patrick Meeks, he's not here today. He's got 18 years, and these folks are retiring. It's a lot of talent leaving, a lot of years of service and everything. And for that, the board appreciates you and thanks you. Have y'all got anything you wanna say?
Yeah.
I just appreciate y'all giving me, and you know, I miss everybody a little bit a minute here, well, most of them. It's been a great ride, and I hope to see everybody.
It's been a pleasure and a privilege.
I just wanna say that not only have I had working relationships and networks and professional relationships, but I truly feel like I've got a family. And I'm very proud of our pre-year program. We just kicked off my last chance to push it out, okay? We have the only paramedic apprenticeship program in the state, thanks to Billy Ferguson and our public safety team, Parable College, and Corrigan, and BDU. So, we've accomplished a lot over the years. It's a great team, and I've heard that a great team plays the work. I'm very appreciative of the support from the board that I've received over the years today.
Again, thank y'all for your service. Mr. Chairman, as. Hey, buddy.
Mr. Chairman, as we continue to celebrate retirements, you know, we had Miss Stanley's celebration last Friday, and of course, Billy Ferguson, there's a celebration scheduled for him, and invite all the board, and certainly staff, from 2:00 to 4:00 next Tuesday at the Franklin Center. That's from 2:00 to 4:00 in the multi-purpose room, not to be outdone by Kathy and her celebration from her staff in the county on Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00. So, Thursday, 1:00 to 4:00 at the Franklin Center, and Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00, we look to honor Billy and Kathy. So, thank all our employees for all their years of service.
Thanks again, y'all. Appreciate it. We got through that pretty quick. I didn't think we was gonna get through that quick. Did good.
Right on time.
All right, we're gonna move right on into the consent agenda. I'd like to remind the supervisors that if you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda, that a lot of times, these problems can be worked out if you contact staff prior to the board meeting. All right, what's your pleasure with this consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull number one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull number four, please.
All right, number one, is there something that we can talk about and, can we take care of it now, or do we need to go in our work session?
Um.
What's, what's on your mind?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, I think we need to look more into that on a permanent basis. If we think we're gonna move out, our money could be better spent coming up with a permanent solution, and if we have the room at the Franklin Center and these other locations to house this, I think we should, in our budget process, we should be looking at moving away from those leases since it's for sale anyway, and finding a more permanent route instead of 150,000 just for temporary measures.
Chris, you got, is there a time, are we on time crunch here for leases, or can we take care of this in the work session Thursday?
We can, we can, we can, we can take this matter up on Thursday. I will note to Mr. Mitchell that, of course, that's one of the purposes of the relocation from the, from the current public safety offices to the lower level of the Franklin Center. We've identified, really, that likely is a, I guess, the definition of permanent. We could see that space being adequate to fulfill the needs of public safety administrative offices for many, many years.
Sure.
And so, you know, that being said, that was, that was one of the reasons why we had that opportunity to get out of those leased spaces that we're currently in, in public safety offices, because that space is readily available on the lower level of the Franklin Center. That said, Franklin Center serves as a training center for public safety. There's a lot of logic and reason, you know, to have the offices there on the lower level. But if we need more detail, if there are still more questions that the board may have, we certainly can, Mr. Chairman, take that up and follow up with more information.
Well, I guess maybe my thing would have a Well, I guess maybe my thing would have a timeline, see where we're, when we're planning on moving from this one and moving on to the next one, instead of just... A lot can happen in a, in a short amount of time, come up with something different and change it. I'd rather have that more concrete.
Sure.
Let's pull that and take it up in our work session on Thursday.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd ask Brandy Rosser, who oversees general properties, if, um, if she has anything further maybe to add now or, and we can also, um, get this information for Thursday as well.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add, by temporary, I would say we'd be saying minimum three to five years that they would be in that space, um, assuming that the properties were to sell. Depending on the terms of that sale, we may be asked to vacate ninety days. We may have until the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It's gonna depend on the terms, um, of that agreement. So, it could be short-term, it could be long-term. At this point, until the building sell, we don't really have an idea.
And I guess that adds to another point, maybe we should, instead of, uh... We should be looking and go ahead and make these changes and not waiting for, um, a building to sell and just maybe get out of the leases altogether. And, and go ahead and just make this a concrete thing instead of...
Alright, we'll pull this one completely off and take care of it in work session on Thursday. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a, a question, Mr. Whitlow, you may be able to answer, uh, with regard to the wastewater capacity work that we're pursuing at Summit View Business Park?
Yes.
Um, as noted in the executive summary, um, there are numerous grant applications that we're going after and according to my math, it's a little over five million dollars in totality, um, for this work. How, I guess it's twofold question. How optimistic are we with these grant sources? And are they coming together in a timely way in terms of grant awards that will be meaningful towards the implementation of these services?
Yes, Ms. Smith, to answer your question, in terms of optimism, of course, we, we always want to have the optimism for, for the grant awards. Speaking with our interim economic development director, Beth Doughty, we feel, um, pretty strong about the business site's readiness grant application that is submitted, as, as well as potentially, uh, tobacco, the, um, the other, the Southeast Crescent, that may be, speaking with Mr. Sandy, that may be more of a stretch. That's one of the smaller amounts, I think that one was only for a few hundred thousand. To answer your question regarding the timeline, the timing of these grants do align with the West Virginia Water Authority in terms of providing, um, capacity expansion. And so, when those grant awards are made known to us, we will, uh, move expeditiously with the Water Authority to, to expand that capacity. But it, it does work within the timelines, uh, for the Water Authority.
And are you confident that the, the numbers that are quoted here are going to, will be able to stay within budget on a projected basis?
Confident in today's terms, in terms of what the Water Authority has shared with us with their figures, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Smith, are you, you set aside to leave it on there or you wanna pull it for work session?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna, we'll pull one and take care of that in the work session. Now, we need to take action on two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Need to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items two, three, four, five, six, and seven as presented.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Madam clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Alright, Mr. Daniels. Good to see you today, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to, good to be with you today. Uh, we have got a whole lot to back into fifteen minutes, I'm gonna jump right into it. I'll do my typical maintenance or board report, take any questions or comments. And Ms. Cooper and I are gonna, uh, work on two and three together. So, um, a couple highlights on the board report that I wanna make real quick. Pre-boost thirty days, it's top page one, um, Route six thirteen, South Side Drive, we did a pipe rehab, which is typically no big deal. But the reason I'm highlighting it is we used a, a flexible liner, which is something new to us. We've used it in a few other places in the district, but it was, uh, very economical to rehab this pipe. It's about a hundred feet long. It's about, uh, if I remember right, thirteen feet of filler more on, so it's a deep pipe. This flexible liner worked very well, as I said, it was economical for us, something we'll probably use in the future. So, that was a, that was a good news story for us. Moving on down, six twenty-nine Hatchet Road, uh, was closed. It's, it's actually open to traffic, we've still gotta do the hard surfacing on it, what have you. But that's open ahead of schedule. Eton Road will be closing here soon, um, we're gonna do a pipe replacement there. And the bridge repair or the washout around the bridge on Route eight ninety, uh, Snow Creek Road, the Big River Bridge, is coming along very well. We originally set a date of March twenty-nine. I gotta be careful what I commit to, but we, we should beat that date. We didn't find damage to the structure, which was the unknown at the time. The debris pile has been removed, they worked on that very judiciously and done a great job getting that out of there. So, we are ahead of our original schedule, albeit was tentative. I won't give you an opening date yet, but hopefully within the next few weeks, we'll get traffic back on it. There'll be some paving that needs to be done later, but the main goal is getting it back open to traffic. So, that's going well, is the takeaway there. I'm gonna skip over to page three. Remember last month, I told you I'd be coming to you with some news about apparent low bidders for our projects on two twenty? Be careful what you commit to, that didn't happen. So, what I'm here with to tell you today, unfortunately, we got zero bids on our Bond Brook Mill Road intersection improvement. We don't know why, but we got zero bids, so it's gonna, gonna go back out for advertisement. The Wurts, the two twenty at Wurts Road, which was, uh, coupled with the two twenty at Sontag and Pleasant Hill, that project got one bid, but it was quite a bit higher than our engineer's estimate. We have a allowance for up to seven percent above our engineer's estimates and then we have to start looking at it and figuring out what went wrong. This one was, was quite a bit north of that, so the bid was, uh, basically thrown out. What's gonna happen now is, we're gonna bundle, and this was a, a district decision, to try to get some competitive bids on these projects. There's a project at four nineteen and two twenty that Roanoke County's do, uh, asking for. We're gonna bundle that with these other, um, through cuts down two twenty. If you remember, we talked about there's seven of those, four in Roanoke, two in Franklin and one in Henry and the Bond Brook Mill Project. We'll bundle them all together, we're gonna put them out to ad, anticipating we'll, we'll get some very interested bidders in that large of a project. That extends the timeline, that's the negative. We'll know more about that. We would like to go to ad this summer, but I'm, I can't give you an exact date today. But, um, a little bit of a shock to us, but sometimes you have those setbacks and we'll deal with it and move forward. Uh, that's all of my, my board report, any...
Anybody got any questions to, for Todd on this, Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Todd, just a couple quick things, um, and you can follow back up with me, um, in, in terms of time. Um, I'm still getting a lot of complaints on Dudley Amos with potholes and one of them, I think, is at a point where cars are trying to bypass it and it's becoming dangerous because of line of sight. And citizens are getting a little wary, especially at night and all trying to dodge it. If, um, I know I've talked to you before about, about that issue. The second one, um, I've been asked about, um, getting rumble strips on Anchor Drive heading out to Scruggs. It's very, very dark through there at night and when you're coming from Anchor Drive to Scruggs, it, it, from what I'm being told, residents, there are a lot of people that'll just fly on through there, which at that turn, you know, coming around the turn there at waterfront, um...
Rumble strips as being in the road to, to warn you of the curve?
To warn you of coming into Scruggs where the stop sign is, yeah.
You say anchor?
Yes, yes. And the last one that I had was Lakewood Forest, about two and a half miles down. There's evidently, well, there is a dangerous curve and the citizens are asking, uh, if, if VDOT would consider extending the double yellow line all the way down. So, that's all I have, Todd, and you don't have to address that with me today, of course.
Mr. Tatum?
Uh, yes, one, one, we'll say Dudley Amos, we talked about that and you've, you've asked us several times. Our schedule was this spring to do some repair, we, as you well know, we gotta do some significant repair and it will be on our surface treatment schedule, which means we'll overlay the whole road with a surface treatment in two thousand and twenty-five. But, uh, it sounds like we need to speed up our plan to do a little repair ahead of time.
Thank you, Todd, I appreciate it.
Mr. Tatum?
Alright, Mr. Daniels, just, uh, I asked, I think I mentioned to you a month or so ago, Ingramville Road near the intersection. We had a car slid through the intersection again just the other day, went paying attention. If we could look at that again, possibility of some rumble strips there, but just before they get to the stop sign?
Yeah, I don't think we've done it, I'd have to confirm if we've done it yet or not, but we were... Our plan is to put up a double the yellow arrow that, as you leave Ingramville onto Henry and then, uh, the stop ahead with the strips. That'll likely come before potential rumble strips, but I don't think we've got to sign up, Mr. Tatum, I'll check on that.
Okay, I appreciate it, and one other thing, I had a, a gentleman call me the other day, he moved to, uh, Dry Hill Road, which I know I've talked to you about many times over the years. He moved there, uh, a little over a year ago from Roanoke County and he just wanted me to relay to our VDOT representatives how impressed he has been with the way that you all have taken care of the roads in his neighborhood. So, I know you hear complaints, but this, this gentleman wanted to relay a, a compliment and I told him I would pass that along, he was very complimentary with your staff.
Well, make sure our Salem, so he came from Roanoke County?
He moved here from Roanoke County.
Let our Salem residency know that too. Thank you.
Alright, nobody else has anything, we're moving on to smart scale.
Okay, let's see, I'm a ducks over here. Okay, so, um, in fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, the county made application in twenty eighteen and the board approved it in twenty nineteen, which made it part of our fiscal year twenty twenty-six year plan. The project at Lost Mountain in one twenty-two. So, if you recall, county staff developed a project with, with, with VDOT's help to add turn lanes into Lost Mountain, turn lanes into Booker T., uh, some, some median improvements and what have you, with, with even some thoughts about, um, some landscaping and what have you. I'm gonna bring up a diagram in two seconds, I think, yeah, there we go. Give me the main line. Yeah, can I do it? Okay, so we'll show this real quick. So, uh, through our project development, um, we, we've seen some, uh, developments, I'll say, with the National Park Service and Booker T. Washington, because it required some right-of-way acquisition and, and other things, for, for components of the project, that has, has brought us to what you see on your screen now and what was in your packet. A suggestion, an idea of converting this to a roundabout. Now, we, we take out several pieces of it, the, the turn lane into Booker T., that limits the impact of right-of-way and some other factors, and we focus solely on the intersection, which was the reason for the project to improve safety at Lost Mountain, that was the target. But it was also an opportune time to, to do some other improvements in this, in this corridor. So, I don't, I don't know if you would call this, it is a scale back a little bit, but we've done a couple things. Our location design, um, engineer in Salem has checked with our smart scale committee because this is a change. They've approved that, this is an allowable change. And if you recall, similar to what we did at, at, uh, one twenty-two and Hardy Road, there, there appears to be, and I, and I believe there's, there's enough budget here to easily accomplish the construction of, of what you see here. Now, this is an early design, so exactly where the roundabout is, it can move a little bit. But you see pretty quickly the impact, uh, it doesn't affect with the Booker T. property, the National Park Service at all. So, what we've asked of, uh, Mr. Whitlow is, because the county originally applied for the project through smart scale, that before we make this change, that we get the county to concur that, yes, we agree that this is a, a proper change. So, I, Mr. Whitlow would typically send us a letter, obviously, but not without the board concurrence. So, uh, I don't know that I'm formally ask, I guess I am, according to Mr. Sandy, asking for a concurrence procedurally, Mr. Chairman, I don't know exactly.
Does anybody got any questions for you, Tom?
Just a statement, Mr. Chairman, so Todd, my understanding is with smart scale funding, obviously, this has been evaluated, um, by the engineers, but, um, if we were to make a decision to do nothing at Lost Mountain, that money would go back, um, to the state and it would be given out to another locality. It would go back in the smart scale pot, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's basically correct and I don't recall if this, well, this got all district grant monies. So, I think I would, I'm fairly comfortable saying the money would stay in Salem District.
Right.
But it, it is not, uh, in a placeholder for Franklin County or any other given county. It would, it would come about in future rounds, that money would get distributed. So, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
It goes back in the pot.
Alright, it's my understanding, we need, we need to take a little action on this. We don't have to do a roll call vote, but we do need to, uh, do a vote to move forward or to reject it as presented. So, I'll entertain a motion to move forward as presented.
I'll make a motion to move forward as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, there's your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And now we're going with, uh... Smart Scale.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Cooper and back her up.
Attachment ten in your book.
Not that she needs any backup.
I was gonna say, you better be careful. No, I might need some backup.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, I'm trying to make sure I get the right one. And I did. Sorry about that. Um, we're here to talk to you about smart scale and actually, um, the one that we just discussed was in round six, I mean, round three, and now we're gonna be applying for round six. And so, what we're here today is to talk about smart scale. I know some of you are new to the board, so just to let you know, smart scale is a funding store, a source that is based on a balance of transportation needs and prioritizing the investments for both urban and rural communities throughout the Commonwealth. When this was first, um, discussed back in two thousand thirteen, I think, um, House Bill Two was what it used to be called, was adopted in two thousand fourteen. This was a way for localities, especially, uh, Franklin County being a rural locality, not to have to wait twenty years to get, uh, funding for projects. So, um, when this came about, we were really excited, we're not sure we knew exactly what we were doing, it was a new program. So, that's when we applied for Hardy Road and Route one twenty-two and we were very fortunate, that was our first project to get. This funding source does have some merits that have to be met, um, when we do pre-application and full applications and that has, that has to improve safety, improvements to congestion, which we do not have much. That is why we get, um, a higher score for safety. Accessibility, land use, economic development, environment. We are scored on all of those merits, um, each of our projects. The C T B developed this, um, they want to be accountable, they want it to be transparent. They go through a prioritization, um, process to get this on our six-year improvement program and you hear us talking about the S Y I P., about spring and fall meetings that you're invited to to talk about Franklin County's plan with other, um, localities in the Salem District. The funding requirements, this is biennial, we do this, um, in the even, even years is when we apply for smart scale. There's two source of fundings, um, there's district grant and high priority. The district grant is the one we have been very successful in, all of our projects has been funded under that. We are allowed to apply for both, so when we do smart scale, we apply for both high priority and district grant as the locality. Unfortunately, the, um, planning districts, they can only apply for the high priority money for us. Each of these projects require to meet a need in Vtrans and Vtrans is the state transportation, uh, plan for the Commonwealth. Think of it like their comprehensive plan that you have for this locality. Who can apply? Like I said, localities can apply, counties and cities and some towns, uh, can apply for smart scale funding. The planning commission districts can also apply for funding for us. We are fortunate, we are allowed to, um, submit six applications, the locality can submit four and then West Piedmont always submits one for us and usually Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission does the same. As I said before, we have been very successful with the district grant money. We have had eight projects worth over fifty-two million dollars to come into this county since two thousand fourteen. So, we feel very fortunate. Round five, we didn't do as well, we did not get a project, but, uh, we are here to talk about the six that we would like to do pre-application. the six that we would like to do pre-applications for. Just to give you a little timeline, the reason why I'm here today is pre-application start March 1st. So staff will be able to start entering pre-applications. From April 1st to May 31st, VDOT will be looking at all of our projects, making sure that they meet VTран needs. I told you it had to meet the needs of their state transportation plan, and if they're eligible for smart scale. Full applications will take place in June to August, so we will be back to you before June to tell you what pre-applications made it through to full. We're hoping all six will. That's if you approve them today. August 24th through December 24th, VDOT will be working hard on the projects that are submitted for full applications. They're going to screen them, evaluate them, and then score them. We should hear something about smart scale projects in probably late January or early February is when we hear the scoring. Today we are asking you to allow us to submit pre-applications. One is for Six Mile Post, Scuffling Hill Road at Route 40. This is improvements to the intersection. Henry Road and Route 22, this is intersection and roadway improvements. Harmony School Road and Route 122, these are intersection and roadway improvements. Brooks Mill Road and Scruggs Road is also intersection and roadway improvements. The pre-applications that we're asking the planning districts to submit is Iron Ridge Road and Route 220 and intersection and roadway improvements. And the new project for this year, because the other five have been submitted in round five, the new project is Bethlehem Road, Boons Mill Road, and Route 220. Sure, a lot of you are familiar with that intersection. In your packet, you do see support from the town of Boons Mills Council. That will be our newest project, and that will be the project that VDOT is helping with us this year to get us a sketch. So before the full application, I should have you a conceptual plan for that one. If you would like to see where all these are located, we did submit maps into your packet. I'll be glad to go over those. If not, what I'm looking for today is for your approval or your motion to be able to submit pre-applications, the four that we want to do as the locality, and the two for the PDCs. And I would be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Cooper? All right, your motions for, on page three of number 10?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Which one's that?
I will make a motion to authorize county staff to continue working on the pre-applications listed above for the county for submittal by the April 1st deadline, and authorize the county administrator to execute all necessary documents needed for submittal, and to continue to seek assistance from the PDCs in submitting the two pre-applications on the county's behalf.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same way. Sure there is none, we'll move forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Todd.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So in the essence of time, I will breeze through this, but if there are any questions, just stop me. We can certainly provide more later in the meeting or at our work session Thursday. So for our financial report, we're looking at data through January 31st. Seven months of the fiscal year, that 'd be about 58% would be what we would expect. Basically, overall, we're within where we would expect, or if we're not, we know there are timing differences, and so we're aware of that. No concerns on the revenue picture based on our categories or on the expenditures at this point. So to graph that, we'll show that. We are in line compared to prior year where we would be with our major categories. We'd expect that. No major variations there. We're still seeing real estate a little short of where we would like it to be. It's about 49% of the budget, almost $200,000 less than it was through January last year. So we're continuing to monitor that. A big portion of the budget, obviously, but of course, with the switch to twice a year, we'll continue. But overall, we're okay as far as collections go. That's a very small percentage of a $20 million number. So as far as personal property, we're still seeing an increase. It's a little less. It dropped a little bit year over year compared to last month, but still a healthy increase over prior year in our personal property. Local sales had a very good month, as you can see on the graph there, so about almost 16% of an increase year over year, just under $700,000. So we're continuing to monitor that. Meals tax, seeing good growth for the month, year over year, up a little bit. Only about $38,000 growth year over year, but about 4.1%. Transient occupancy, so we had a down month, so we're about 11.1% behind where we were prior year. We're still ahead of budget. We're at 60.5% of budget. That's ahead of that 58% benchmark we would be looking at. But in looking at this, a lot of this, it seems to be, there's not a nice trend line on it. And so because of the nature of transient occupancy and how we collect it, it's difficult to do, because a lot of that's through third-party intermediaries. So as far as expenditures, you can see they normalize back down for January after our month of transfers in December, all of those entries that we made. Categorically, year over year, we're up a little bit in all categories. We would expect that with price increases that we've seen across with the inflationary pressures that we're facing. To break it down a little bit further, we see that specifically, again, in social services and our CSA, we're continuing to see increased costs, trying to manage as best we can, but a lot of those contracts are with third parties, and there's very little wiggle room for negotiation in a lot of these items on the expenses. Our fund balances are relatively unchanged from last month. There have been no other obligations that have been committed to this point. So economic update, January, we saw 3.1% increase in inflation year over year from January 2023. Because of that, with the Federal Reserve target rate, you know, their benchmark is 2%, and so they had their meeting in January. They did not change that. They left the current rate the same. It's about 5 to 5 and 1/4 percentage points. Their next meeting's not till March 19th, March 20th. And so really, there's no reductions expected at this point till at least the summer, or realistically, it could be later in the second half of calendar 2024. Depends on that benchmark, that inflation rate. So as far as state budget update, so we do have now the budget from the House and the Senate of the General Assembly, the budgets, I guess I should say, each one. So continuing to analyze, as we're seeing that, neither version considered the governor's tax reduction proposals. The only thing that did agree on was the increase in sales of digital products, sales tax on digital products. There was, in both versions, I believe, restored funding for the reduction in sales tax for groceries. That was eliminated last year but funded, and so the governor's budget removed that funding. Both House and Senate restored it. The elimination of the personal property tax and the local portion of the sales tax, those have been tabled. They seem to be dead in this year's General Assembly. The House and Senate did propose more compensation funding for state-supported local employees and school employees. They ranged it very depending on which version you were looking at, the House or the Senate version. If you remember, the governor had no continuous or increase in his budget for employees, especially state-supported employees in fiscal year 2025. It was a 1% bonus. And so this would be a 2 and 1/2 to 3 or 3.75% recurring increase every, both years of the biennium. Remember, this is a two-year budget, and so we will see how that goes. They did propose additional funding for schools for more competitive pay. They referenced the J-LARC study that showed Virginia's ranking very low across nationwide as far as compensation for education, specifically teachers. There was no funding that has been, I've noticed at this point, for any LCI hold harmless provision in either of the bills. Could be, continue to be analyzed, but I haven't seen it brought out. The next step really is, as they continue to negotiate both the House and Senate version of the budget, is the session is scheduled to end March 9th. And so at that point, assuming they're on time, they will have a budget to the governor, and then the governor will have his review and ultimately the veto session. Assuming that, I believe it's April 17th, the General Assembly would reconvene to consider the governor's amendments. So that's where we're at on a state timeframe on the budget. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or go back on any detail if so desired.
All right. In our work session on Thursday, it's gonna be primarily on what these slides were that he just said. With that being said, has anybody got any questions for him today? Thursday's one to do that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Preston, Greg Preston, Executive Director for Piedmont Community Service, Opioid Abatement Authority Grant Program Update.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Mr. Whitlow, Mr. Carter, thank you for allowing Piedmont to be here today to present four projects for the Opioid Abatement Authority Grant Application. We'll be discussing the Pearl Program. Ms. Monica Flora, who's our Assistant Director of our Arts Services. We'll talk about our mobile unit. Again, Monica will give an update. Our Franklin County Family Drug Treatment Court, Ms. Kelly Kobel, who is our Director of Behavioral Health Services. And lastly, our Prevention Services, Ms. Regina Clark, who's our Director of Prevention Services. Also, just wanted to recognize Ms. Caroline Hilsen, who's our CFO, and also Dr. Chuck Swanson, who's our Medical Director. So I'm covered, so I have plenty of folks to answer all the questions, so.
I'm gonna keep clicking through these. I'm Monica Flora, the Assistant Director of Addiction and Recovery Treatment Services. It is a pleasure to meet all of you. And to introduce to you, if you haven't heard about the Pearl Program, we realized in 2018 that about 30 to 40% of babies that were born at Roanoke Memorial Hospital that were substance-exposed were coming directly from Franklin County. And so we were trying to figure out, how can we help the moms with their substance use issues and mental health issues? How can we help the amount of children that were placed in foster care and try and get these moms to be healthy? And one of the solutions that we came up with was the Pearl Program. It stands for Peer Empowered Addiction and Recovery Living. There are several evidence-based models that show that when working your way into recovery, working with those who are also in recovery increases success rate. This is also true if you have mothers that have recently delivered or are postpartum, up to a year after delivery. If they have their babies with them, there is an increased success rate that they'll stay into recovery, and the babies will be healthy. So in 2021, we opened the Grace House here in Rocky Mount. It is a six-bed recovery residence where we invite women to come and live during their pregnancy and to stay. About a year later, we're finding that the moms are wanting to stay with us. In fact, for the first time ever, I was subpoenaed to court last month, and the mom asked the judge to court order her to stay longer, because it was working. The program was successful. We know that there's lack of housing. We know that there's lack of wraparound support. Since 2021, we've had 15 women that have lived at the Grace House and 13 healthy babies. So those are 13 babies that did not go into foster care or other care of a family member. We currently have six living units. We had five, and we renovated a basement, which was an office, into a living space, and there are two apartments upstairs that we can't have access to due to some condemned staircase. And so we're hoping that if we were able to fix the staircase and the two living apartments, we would open those up for additional moms. Along with the housing that they receive, we find that most of our moms don't have prenatal services, so we refer them for prenatal services. We work closely with Corillian OB-GYN physicians. We offer case management, wraparound counseling in our office-based addiction treatment program. I think there is a picture of Grace House. Our moms seem to have integrated greatly into the neighborhood. They have been adopted by local churches. They attend community events at the farmer's market, and without them telling you that they were a part of a program for recovery and substance use, you probably wouldn't know. I also want to take a minute to tell you about our mobile unit. So a big push of mine that is really important to me is getting out of brick and mortar and getting into the community where we can see individuals, because we know that transportation and finances are a huge barrier for individuals to access addiction treatment. So we were able to purchase with fully 100% grant funding a mobile unit, where we take a nurse practitioner, nursing staff, a therapist, a case manager, and a peer recovery specialist out into the community. We partnered with several local churches. We currently operate the unit two days a week, soon to be three days a week in Franklin County. They are out there from about 8:30 to 3:30 PM. We have individuals that come to us. Our most heavily served areas are out towards Burnt Chimney right now, partnering with a church. And we find that individuals are coming to us for longer durations of treatment on the mobile unit. So we have a decent success rate in the office, of folks coming for their first visit, and then you start to see those rates of visits decline as they continue, as they're having trouble coming back. So the mobile unit allows them to access services closer to their home. Here are some pictures of the mobile unit. It's beautiful. A local photographer, Beth Preston, took a picture for us, and we put our 24/7 warm line number on the back. You may see it as you're driving down Main Street. It's often parked at 30 Technology Drive. We wanted individuals to know that it was Piedmont by our logo, but also protect their confidentiality. That is Cahese Mountain. That's actually on the side of the mobile unit. And then below, we have some pictures of our team. This is the inside. We wanted the mobile unit to be relatively comfortable, that when individuals, both men and women, walked in, that they didn't feel that they were in a hospital setting, that they were inpatient. We wanted them to feel comfortable for some therapy and medical services.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Kobel, and I'm the Director of Behavioral Health. I've had the fortunate pleasure of being part of our Family Drug Court Treatment Team here in Franklin County. I want to talk about some of the players. We've had a lot of community involvement with this treatment drug court. So Judge Stone is our judge with the J and D R Court. I saw a bunch of our DSS folks here earlier today, and they have been a huge support of this program and provide a full-time staff person that helps us to run this program. We also have the CSA office as part of our program. Brian Carter is our fiscal agent for our grant, and that has been a lot of fun to work on. Then we also have DJJ, the Department of Juvenile Justice, has somebody that's on our team. Schools provide a social worker that is on our team, so we have lots of players in our community that are helping to kind of put this together. So for several years, Franklin County had a juvenile drug treatment court. Because of some code changes that have to do with juvenile charges that seem no longer feasible, the county kind of talked about, or the folks that were involved in that talked about, what is it that we do need? You know, Brian mentioned earlier CSA cost going up. Part of the reason CSA costs go up is foster care, and particularly, and I know in this locality, as well as Henry County, Martinsville, we struggle to find local foster homes, so you have to do therapeutic foster homes, and they cost even more. And then our individuals, our kids, get placed out of our community, so it's even harder to try to reunify, to get them the services they need. So this was our solution to kind of help with that problem. We're still new. We're only a year, and not even a year and a half into this. So we had our very first participant come into the program December 2022. We have had three graduates, and that might not sound like very many, but at the very least, this program will take you 14 months. So I think three graduates is pretty amazing in that period of time. Out of those three graduates, it included five children, two of which were placed at a family member's home, three of which were in therapeutic foster care outside of this community. That was a cost to this locality. And all of those kids returned home safely before their parent graduated and have been able to remain there since then. So so far, we've served 13 participants, so that's within the last 12 months. We were very fortunate that we did receive some funding from the Bureau of Justice Administration. So that funding started in October of '22 and goes through the end of September '25. We do think that we'll be able to manage that money a little bit longer than that and probably get a one-year extension, but I did want to say out loud that in order for us to continue to be able to run our drug treatment court, we currently have a full-time drug court coordinator, a full-time peer specialist. We have to cover We have to cover the cost of drug tests and program supplies. We also provide parenting programs to all of our participants. Other things that we've been able to do with our money is we have compliance officer that will go out to the home in the evenings and the weekends. We've been able to put all the families through equine therapy with a battle change. We have emergency funds for families who are struggling to, maybe they can't get to an appointment because they don't have gas. So we fill up their gas tank every once in a while. Maybe they're behind on their rent. Well, they can't focus on their recovery and getting their kids back if they don't have a place to live. So we've tried to help out with some of those things. And then my last bullet point that I wanted to share, there have been just a few studies about family treatment courts because they are so new in the nation. We were only the fifth in Virginia to be approved. But a cost-effectiveness study that was done, that looked at four different drug courts, showed that they reduced foster care by 227 days on average, and that savings per child involved is $18,000. So just something to think about, a program that I'm super passionate about, really proud of, and really excited that we have here in Franklin County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Regina.
Good afternoon. I'm Regina Clark. I'm the Director of Prevention Services for Piedmont. And thank you for the opportunity to share about some of our programs and some of our needs. Many years ago, the question was asked, why is it that some folks could grow up in a home where there's adverse childhood experiences and still go on to be thriving, successful young adults? And then others are not. So there was some research that was done by the Search Institute that started to look at that. And they discovered that there are forty developmental assets that are key for young people to kind of have in their world, really, to help them to survive. Twenty of them focus on more of the external factors, meaning having commitment to school, having a community that they're involved with. And then there's twenty that are more internal, which has to do with social values and self-esteem and some of that. We do know from the research that was done that the more assets that a person has, the more likely they are to resist high-risk behaviors, the more likely they are to go on and be successful and thriving. And ultimately, resilience, they're able to be resilient. One of the things that was a huge focus in the study that was done is having someone who can be a supportive person for them, ongoing. Having a supportive, loving, consistent and supportive adult. So these are a few of the things. Others include family support, positive peer groups, strong sense of self and self-esteem, and involvement at school and the community. So these are some of the things that prevention, we strive to promote. We have a strong youth task force called CHIL, which is Communities Helping to Improve Local Lives. That's made up of high school students that are committed to making healthy, positive choices. We're proud of them. And we also have an active community coalition called FRESH. And so they do a lot to support the youth. We listen to what they say and what they identify as some of the needs. And then we figure out how to support them and also do a lot with providing education around various substance-related issues. So, in an area that we would like to see developed, is providing a comprehensive support to students in the middle and high school. And this is where we come in with what we hope would be a little bit more of a short-term additional support for their struggling with either early substance use behaviors or mental health challenges. So Project Success, it is a comprehensive student assistance program. It allows staff to integrate into the school community and provide prevention and early intervention services. So some of the things that are included are classroom education lessons, individual and small group support, problem identification and referral services, comprehensive school-wide awareness campaigns. And there's also even a component for providing education and information to parents and caregivers. So we already do a lot with our CHIL youth, and so we want to expand on that as well. One of the things that CHIL and FRESH work closely together is the after-prom party. That's something that we're very proud of. We've been able to do that for three years, both pre-COVID and post. And so there's a lot of good things happening, and we want to continue that. In addition to the items that I just mentioned, there are other lessons that can be incorporated in. This is not about drugs, is a program focused on opioid use and also the brain science behind addiction. So it helps students to learn and influence the decisions that hopefully they will make positive choices. And then also the signs of suicide and mental health wellness lessons, where we find that mental health and substance use share a lot of the same risk and protective factors. So it's hard to treat one, address one without addressing the other. So as you can tell with all the services that we provide, we do try to work comprehensively at Piedmont on these things. And we're very proud of the Family Drug Court, the Mobile Unit, Grace House. We want to see families reunited. We want to see the, you know, women and children breaking generational cycles. And we want to see people thrive and succeed. And prevention, we really want to go upstream and hopefully prevent people from ever needing those services to begin with. So as an early intervention service, oftentimes, youth just need someone to talk to. Maybe it's they're having challenges with life, school, whatever it may be. And just like many adults, we just need someone to listen to us and to talk to. So that is something that this program would be able to provide. A person does not have to have an actual diagnosis to be able to participate in the benefits of this. So with over a half a million dollars being spent annually for foster care in the community, and even more for treatment and support services, I would just like to quote that famous quote, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Has anybody got any questions for Mr. Preston or a member of his staff? All right, Board, we need to take action on this on Section 11, Page 2. There are some motions. It's what's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize staff to submit a grant application to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority incorporating the projects as proposed by and in partnership with Piedmont Community Services.
Second?
A second.
The chairman's second. Is it all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all for today and for your presentation. We appreciate the update. That vehicle you had, that's the one you had here last time that we toured.
Yeah, that's very nice.
That's nice. It's nice. Thank you. All right. Mr. Chapman, if you'll come forward, and I think you're going to introduce Ms. Dillon and help her with her discussion, but first, you've got a statement to make.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all for being here today.
Yes, Chairman, members of the Board, yeah, thank you very much for having us here today. I'm here today, as you mentioned, Chairman, with Ms. Reba Dillon. She and a number of others have formed a group called the Recreational Development of Franklin County. And they're a former 501(c)(3), and they have a proposal that they like to bring to the Board today. And I'll kind of give you an overview of this concept and see if you all may have any questions for me or Ms. Dillon. So this project is, this group would like to create a dog park in Franklin County. Many of you all know what a dog park is, but in case you don't, it's pretty much just a fenced-in area where you're allowed to let their dogs off-leash, to socialize, to get exercise. Typically, they're divided into a small dog and a large dog area. There might be some minis there. And that's really pretty much a dog park is. It's mostly a place for people to get, let their dogs get some exercise. And today, people think of their dogs as family members, so that's really important. But to be totally transparent, I think one of the biggest bonuses about dog parks are the people side of things. Because when their dogs are playing, people are there, socializing, communicating, getting out, meeting their neighbors. And it really creates a much better sense of community and livability. And I imagine, this is a test I always use, it's about if a realtor, if a realtor was selling a house near this dog park, I bet you he would say, if he noticed the prospective people buying this house had a dog, I bet they would say, did you know there's a dog park a short drive away? Or then walking distance, something like that. I know that would be, help not only retain residents, but also attract new residents as well. So let me see here, on here is, we have a map of the, I always like to predict questions that you all may have. So I know one of the first questions that you have is, so where's this exactly, is this being proposed to be constructed? So this is an area right off of Booker T., right off of Lake Watch Drive, there at the collection site. Everyone knows where that Bojangles is, and the collection site. It's right adjacent to that. And you'll see that yellow area is a county-owned parcel. And if you look a little bit closer in green, that small green is just a little over an acre. And that's about what size this dog park would be. This is, of course, we're early on in the conceptual portion of this idea. So about an acre or two is about the size of a traditional dog park. So it'd be in this area. And I guess some of the reasons why this site are being considered is it's rather easy to get to. It's in close proximity to other things, like even near the collection site. I could see that being a nice bonus. And it's relatively flat. And you can't tell on this picture right here, but across the street and nearby, there's a stormwater pond, a steep hillside. There's some other things like that that probably don't make it the best for being, for other uses. We have had initial conversations with Jeff Galden, Public Works Director, and just the conceptual idea, he didn't seem to see any issues with this proposal. So if I were you, the next question would be, well, okay, I might be for it, but who's paying for it? So this group is proposing to a fundraiser to raise all the funds and oversee the construction of this project. In fact, they've actually started a fundraiser already for building a dog park somewhere. They've already sold a number of tickets. And I know a number of residents and local businesses have already purchased tickets. In fact, after the meeting, if you want to buy a ticket, I'm sure you can see Ms. Dillon to purchase one for yourself. So they're looking to pay for all the costs. The third question I can see you all having is, okay, so if they pay for and build it, how do we know that this is not going to be built shoddy or poorly? Or that somehow the county is going to inherit something of not good quality? That might be a risk to the public, being unsafe or not being aesthetically pleasing. This group is proposed to develop a plan, a master plan for the site, to bring it back for, they'll work closely with Parks and Recreation, of course, and bring it back to you all to review. So that, to make sure that you're okay with the proposal and the quality before you proceed. And lastly, I know another question that some of you all might have is about maintenance. That's, of course, the next one. Many of you all know that Parks and Recreation is on a, we're stretched pretty thin. And so, gosh, that might be too much to put on the existing staff. And so who might maintain this? Might be a question you'd have. So this group is looking to oversee all maintenance of this site. And there'll probably be something, we'll develop like an MOU of like a maintenance agreement. That part's still a bit loose right now, but that's the direction this is going in. And I think that kind of wraps up this portion of it. Before I turn it over to Ms. Dillon, I guess in all in all, this is an idea this group has. They want to build this somewhere in this vicinity. This area looks like a good spot. But before they invested, you know, time, money, and resources on this certain area, they wanted to bring this to you guys to see if this is something that you'd be approving and you're supportive of, or if you'd rather steer them in a different direction. So if you have any questions for me or Ms. Dillon, we'd be happy to answer this now.
Ms. Dillon, do you have anything to add to?
Yes. I did discover one fantastic thing this week. Let's say you all are riding down the road and you're going by the dumpster. There's going to be a holding pond put there for water. So that's going to take up that one space right there. Then we would have the dog park. But here's the thing I want you all to look at. The county actually owns everything in yellow. But if you look at the left, I mean, the right-hand side, there is a really deep gully. So no houses can be built there. So actually, this could be a complete recreational street. And it would be perfect for that. And since we're becoming nonprofit, we're going to be able to reach out for grants. So it's not going to be coming out of my pocket all the time. But the thing I'm asking you all is, give me permission to research it, to show you what we want to build, to come back and offer it to you. And once you all vote, I'll update you on the walk-in trailer.
All right. Any question, Mike?
Yeah. And this is more a question, I think, for county staff. And I remember some discussion about this property two or three years ago, or maybe longer than that. What was projected for the remainder of that parcel?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, there is a Lake Watch master plan that likely still applies, you know, for this. For that specific parcel, that larger parcel, if memory serves me correct, and Mr. Sandy may need to help me here, I think that area was looked at for business, office-business, area-office-business technology park, if you will. And so likely, I'm not sure, Mr. Gwen's not with us, but Mr. Daddak, I do understand, perhaps, even though the county owns this land, the master, the original master plan with the rezone and the SUP still may apply, so there may have to be some modifications to that and so forth. I don't necessarily have the legal answer to that, but, Mr. Carter, if that answers your question, I do think, if memory serves me correct, from that master plan, it was this office-technology park for business there at the cul-de-sac area.
I was just curious. Thank you, Reba. That's great. And thank you for all you do for the county.
You know, one thing we did about five years ago, there was a master plan developed for a park there. When, well, it would have been longer than that, it was when Bob Kamish was on board. There was a master plan put together for a recreational park to be put there with some ball fields and things.
Anybody else got any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Reba, I just want to convey to you my gratitude for your forward thinking and your love of this county. That's always evidenced by all the work that you bring forward. This is my district, and I can tell you that a dog park would be a very popular amenity in my district. And I think it'll be heavily utilized. And of course, you and I have had some conversations. My focus is always going to be that we have a good, firm MOU in place and that we understand ongoing maintenance that's going to be required. You know, it's not going to be something that, if we can, it's going to be mandated. And we just, you know, like you know, Paul doesn't have the capacity to do that. And so making sure that it stays, you know, up to speed, that it's aesthetically maintained. And I know that that's your intention, that I don't think there's any question about that. But there is a sense of enthusiasm in the district about this project coming about. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm in support of getting a look at the master plan, Reba and Paul, and seeing how you've got this laid out, and look forward to moving this along.
Anyone else? I would like, I think this needs to come back in a work session with these questions answered, the plac of this piece of property, the value, things of that nature, and we look into it a little bit more. There are some other projects. Where are they at in their completion?
We have one project right now that's in the Union Hall District, and it's a hiking trail. The trail has developed. The trail now has most of the signs put on it. The trail, my husband is building two bridges because there is two creeks that y'all use for credit. So we're building nice bridges across them. We're hoping to open the second week of April.
Okay. I think the Board's in agreement, shake of heads, to bring us back in a work session to talk about it and to work out the particulars. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Rebecca Bintola, the Library Director, she has with her Liz Wiggars. And she's the Chair to the Library Foundation. And they're going to talk to us about, I think, Dolly Pardon, is that what you was telling us, the Dolly Pardon?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us here, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Since I was here last, I guess I was being introduced as the new Director of the Library. And since then, just want to give you a brief update. We have made some great strides towards our goals of increasing library card membership, increasing the number of people through the door, and increasing participation in programs. And we are doing that with increased marketing. If you happen to visit us online, we now have a new registration and calendar program where you can register for programs from, residents can register from the convenience of their home. of their home. They can even book a librarian for genealogy tech and proctoring help. And we're also advertising now, thank you, Paul, in the playbook. We're going to be in there, so getting the word out to folks of all the wonderful things we do. And the library is more than just books. We are increasing those as well. But did you know, you can check out a guitar, a ukulele, and learn how to play it with some carefully curated books in a kit? And is there something strange in your neighborhood? Who are you going to call? Not the Ghostbusters, you're going to call the library. We now have a ghost hunting kit you can check out with real-life ghost hunting equipment that rivals that of the Discovery Channel. And parents of young children can check out a Storytime kit and emulate what they see done at our wonderful Storytime programs. And they can do that at home. New STEM for kids. We're increasing that through coding robots and various science programs. And we have a new mascot at the library, Luna. And Luna is a dog, and don't worry, I haven't violated any of the library policies. Luna is the first AI robot to grace the halls of the library. She is there to help invoke wonder about science and technology. We will have a Luna at Westlake End. We already have purchased one for the Rocky Mount branch. She has a playpen, and she is ready to go. And our goal also this summer is to increase summer learning participation. We hope to double the numbers from last year through various means. And speaking of bridging the gap, we realize there is a great need to get books out to children, get children access to books in the community. And we realize there's residents that just can't make it to our brick-and-mortar libraries. And how do they get books for these early readers? One way is the Bookmobile and our delivery service, but with the gracious participation and donation from the Franklin County Foundation, these wonderful folks are here to tell you about something else that they have done to make this possible.
While Ms. Gars is coming, I got a note here for you, Mr. Carter, that you need to turn in the Ghostbusters. That it's late overdue and you need to pay your fine.
And there is a fine involved.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to speak today, allowing me to speak on behalf of the Library Foundation. Mr. Thompson, you asked me to keep it brief, one page, big type.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh. I'm sure you all know who Dolly Parton is. If not, this might take a little bit longer. But what you might not know about Dolly is, though her father was a smart and hard-working man, he never learned to read or write. She saw the effect this had on him and on her family, and so in 1995, she started the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Almost 2,990,000 children under five in the U.S. and abroad receive a free book in the mail every month because of this program. As of today, over 600 of those children are in Franklin County, with many more in surrounding counties. Those 600 sign-ups have happened since we launched this program three weeks ago. That's how popular the Imagination Library program is. It's very well-known. Dolly's vision is to help develop a love of reading among preschool children and their families by providing age-appropriate book, one age-appropriate book each month. That's a total of 60 books if a child starts in this program at birth. A love of books and reading builds the foundation for literacy skills that set children up for success. Dolly Parton's Imagination Library levels the playing field for all children by helping them build a library of their very own and encouraging increased interaction with parents and caregivers around books and reading. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library makes this possible with some help from local affiliates like our Library Foundation. You have an outline of the program, how it works, and our local involvement. It's in your packet. But the plan is pretty simple. Dolly does all the backend work of database maintenance, book ordering, and shipping, which is pretty amazing. Our Library Foundation, along with staff at the Rocky Mountain and Westlake Libraries, promote the program to boost registrations and help with sign-ups. That's our job. Then comes the money part. Our foundation is responsible for $2.20 per child per month. Basically, this covers the book shipping fee. Everything else is paid by Dolly. We are lucky in that our state government sees the value of this program and has budgeted 50% of this cost for all DPIL programs in the state for the past several years. We trust this will continue to be the case, but that is not a given. But that brings our share to $1.10 per child per month. You'll see at the bottom of your handout how this cost may play out over time. We're developing a fundraising program, reaching out to individual donors, businesses, corporations with grant programs, and local civic groups. As part of this effort, we have submitted a request for a county external grant in the amount of $8,250. This is to the Franklin County Finance Office, your county finance grant. Our hope is that, if our request for funds makes it to your desks, that you will consider helping us in our efforts to make this program a success for years to come. Jim Morrison, one of our board members, is here. And here I will be happy to answer any questions you may have about this program.
Anybody got any questions? Ma'am, it's like we, when we talked on the phone, it was presented at the perfect time. We're in the budget process, and I'm sure that this will be brought to the board when the library's budget request comes up.
Okay. All right.
We're in the process of doing the budget as we speak. It's being worked on.
We really appreciate your consideration for this program. It is hugely popular, and we've had overwhelming response so far. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Appreciate it. We have a lot to go on in closed session. So if it's okay with the board, we'll skip the break because we're going to have to go in closed session just momentarily. And so, Chris, Mr. Switlow, do your report.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, and I think we highlighted a mirror, and that was the good work of all the county staff and those years, those service awards. It was great to honor the employees earlier today, and then certainly our retirements. And I think I had announced those receptions and so forth for retirees. And of course, it was also mentioned earlier today and last week, there was a signing of the First Apprentice Paramedic Apprenticeship Program in Virginia. We had those apprentices, a signing ceremony there at the Franklin Center. It was a really, really nice event. This is a partnership with multiple partners, including the Franklin Center, Franklin County Public Safety, Virginia Commonwealth University, Fairham College, Carillion Health Systems. I may have missed out someone. I hope I got all of them. And it's a great program that certainly trains staff, both existing staff, and this builds upon. If you all recall, this board will recall, a couple of years ago, we were in a dire situation during the height of COVID of having adequate fire EMS staffs, specifically EMS staff. And so we launched one of the first EMT academies in Virginia with Henry County and the Blue Ridge EMT Academy, and that was very successful. This builds upon that. We're now EMTs can get on-the-job training to further their credentials as paramedics. And so it's advanced life support for our providers and for our citizens. It has added value in this county significantly so for our EMS services. So a shout-out to all the folks that worked on that. Mr. Chairman, we do have a work session on the budget, of course, coming up this Thursday. I know there are several public hearings coming up, one specifically this Saturday. Our school board will be holding a public hearing on possible school closures this Saturday, and then another public hearing on the school budget. I see our superintendent, Dr. Sears, is with us. I think that's Monday evening, Dr. Sears, that staff will present the school budget, and the school board will hold a public hearing on the proposed school budget, I believe, Monday evening there for the public to make any comments, both on Saturday and Monday. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Those are just some brief updates to the board.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daddak?
I don't have anything to report formally. I will note, Mr. Gwynn celebrated 40 years of his marriage this past weekend.
Forty years.
He has said that, yes.
That's what purries I'm covering.
Yes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, well, Mr. Tatum will read his motion here in just a second. We will reconvene in the room, in the county administrator's office. That's where everything is set up, and your supper should be there. We need to take it back there, because I understand we're going to be there for a while. Mr. Tatum?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, and et cetera. A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property. A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry. And A29, discussions of the terms of public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Take a motion, all in favor of going to the closed session? We don't need to do a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Chairman, was there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
We'll be back at 6 o'clock. All right. Mr. Tatum's got something. I'd like you to give me a second.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion of which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Need a second?
Second.
Can I, Bert, do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right. Now, let me get in the room. Can you hear me now? All right. We've got some board appointments that we need to do. The first one, let's do, we have to have a member of the board supervisors, staff, to be on the Piedmont, Piedmont Community. Mr. Mitch, Mr. Nick Mitchell has agreed to do that. Need somebody to make a motion in a second.
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Mitchell to the West Piedmont Planning Commission.
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you all.
All right. Now, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. I have one appointment for Parks and Rec to replace a longtime member on that board, it's Ms. Anna Prilamun Robertson, and I would like to appoint her to Parks and Rec for my district.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Oh. Okay. Let's get that over here. All right. We'll go into our public hearings. Ms. Cooper, application for use by Cheryl Ray applicant on Booker T. Washington Highway.
How do you get this? Oh. Sorry about that. We're here for the evening session for the public hearing. Tonight, we're going to hear a special use permit for the applicant is Cheryl Ray. The owner of the, the name of the owner of the property is 1329 Booker T. Washington Highway LLC is the owner. Like I said, it's for a special use permit for a, well, it's for a special use permit on approximately 2.62 acres. It is zoned A1. The property address is 1329 Booker T. Washington Highway in Rocky Mount Election District. And as I stated, the purpose of this request is for short-term rental of a dwelling. And the future land use on this property is agricultural or agricultural forestry rural residential. As I stated, this is for a special use permit. This will be the only dwelling on the property. And again, it is for 2.62 acres. However, the owner only wants to use one acre of the property for the short-term rental. So the 1.62 acres will not be used. The property is located on Route 122, which is a state-maintained primary road here in the county, and it is close to the town of Rocky Mount. The property has a circular driveway with two entrances onto Route 122. The water is supplied by a well. The sewer is supplied by septic. The applicant will serve as the property manager for the short-term rental. The closest residence is approximately 149 feet, and it is located at 1401 Booker T. Washington Highway. There were zero citizens to comment before the Planning Commission public hearing, and there was no citizens to comment at the Planning Commission public hearing. According to the records, this is a one-story, single-family dwelling. It was constructed in 1972. It consists of three bedrooms, two full baths, one half bath, for a total square footage of approximately 2,172 square feet. The Virginia Department of Health issued a sewage disposal system construction permit for a three-bedroom in September of 1998. The single-family dwelling can be rented as a three-bedroom, a maximum of six adults. This is a conceptual plan that was given to us by the property owner. You can see the circular drive. You can see where the house is located and where the septic is with the drain fields. This is a vicinity map that we like to give you. Like I said, it is at close proximity to Rocky, the town of Rocky Mount. This is an aerial view of the property. Again, you can see the circular drive that goes behind the house, and the acreage that will be used is around in this area. Just to let you know, the owner of this property lives in this house right here, and she is going to serve as the property manager. This is the, excuse me, this is the future land use map, and as you can see, it's agricultural rural residential forestry. This is the zoning map. As you can see, this property is zoned A1, and it is surrounded by A1. Analysis, Franklin County, including the town of Rocky Mount and Smith Mountain Lake, is becoming a prime vacation destination. This proposed use would expand temporary lodging options for guests to have, to use the amenities and recreation that the county offers. In addition, the extra lodging, short-term rentals, will continue to drive tourism and add to economic value of the county. As I stated before, the single-family dwelling can be rented for a maximum of six adults, which is similar to a single-family dwelling that is not rented. The property is surrounded by single-family dwellings on lots that are over an acre or more, and there is a farm across the street. The applicant will serve as the property manager. As I stated, she does have experience in managing properties for rent, and as I showed you, lives close to the property itself. There is ample parking in the driveway to accommodate the renters. The traffic that is generated by the short-term rental would be similar to what is generated by a single-family dwelling that is not rented. The, excuse me, the noise of the rental should not be more than what you normally expect in a residential neighborhood or somebody that lives in the house. And the applicant has mentioned quiet hours due to the closeness of the single-family dwelling that we discussed prior. And in your packet, we have that information, the little packet that she would give to the renters of the house. Your planning commission held their public hearing, and they voted Your Planning Commission held their public hearing, and they voted to approve seven to zero to approve the special use permit with the following conditions. This will be the only dwelling that will be able to be used for short-term rentals. If any other dwelling is constructed, she would have to come back through the process. The owner shall always comply with the supplementary regulations that is found in the county code in Section twenty-five one thirty-eight and Section five point five seventy-two. The owner shall provide and maintain a proof of liability insurance worth at least a million dollars. The owner shall register the short-term rental use, and she'll have the property inspected for compliance with the county code. No short-term rental of property shall be authorized until these inspections take place and the property is found compliant. The short-term rental shall have a maximum of three bedrooms, six adults, according to the Virginia Department of Health Sewer Disposal Operator Permit. If she wishes to expand, she would have to get a new permit. The owner shall establish and supply the Planning Department with the name and phone number of the property manager, which we have, and staff will be notifying the adjoining property owners of this information, and she will have to notify us if there are any changes. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant should be here to speak also.
Anybody got any questions for us?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Lisa, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, as I always ask, um, the septic system was put in in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yes.
Um, are we in compliance, or is the applicant in compliance with the five-year pump-out ordinance? And, you know, I know general language that we see with all of these SUPs talks about compliance with county code upon inspection, but are we doing anything on the septic side of things?
The, because of where this property is located, she would not fall under the septic pump-out program?
Oh, okay.
Um, you have to be at least five hundred, your septic system would have to be five hundred feet, at least five hundred feet, from the Smith Mountain Lake.
Does that, okay, so it doesn't pertain?
So, it doesn't pertain. I did ask the applicant after the Planning Commission meeting if the septic system had been pumped recently. She did not think that it had been pumped, um, but that people had been in and out of the building and they, the home, and they have not had trouble with the septic system.
Is it reasonable to ask for that with a condition?
There is, um, if you, if you, as the board, would like to put that on as a condition, that is something that we can definitely add, that the owner would have to provide the Planning Department with a receipt or invoice that the septic system had been inspected and/or pumped prior to renting short-term rentals.
Yeah, if staff would just make note, I think we need to start looking at that as we get into our zoning rewrite. Uh, I think that that's a german topic that concerns me with every one of these that we get.
And I think we can definitely look into it now, but that, um, if you don't mind, I have a question. If this was a, is something that the board would like to see on all of the short-term rentals, if we know that it hasn't been pumped out in the last five years? If it's something that you would like to see as a condition, we could just start putting that on. Mr. Chairman, I would ask for?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
How about the rest of you? Mr. Carter?
What's that cost? I mean, we're just adding more costs onto a short-term rental thing.
Um.
Three or four hundred bucks.
I was gonna say probably, I was gonna say around three to three fifty.
Me personally, I think we're just adding on more expense.
The, is there health hazards? I mean, we're talking about when sewer overruns and everything. Maybe we need to bring, instead of making a decision on this today, bring it back in a work session and talk about it, uh, at a better suited time. We'll bring that, we'll bring that up in a work session.
Don't we have parameters for, like she said, within five hundred feet of the lake?
At the lake?
But that's, that's just on the Smith Mountain Lake, uh, where it comes out to, where the leakage, uh, would run into the water.
And I don't know if we're looking at potential ground contamination issues. I mean, that's just something we've never explored.
I think we need to bring that back in a work session.
Okay, and, but still, if this is a condition that the board feels like should be put on this one for some reason or another, you could still do it?
Right.
Before your vote.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would yield, um, to the board to do some further work before we start implying this as a condition on short-term rental SUPs, unless there's concurrence to, to start doing it this evening.
I think there's a consensus to do it this evening, but, uh, I do think we need to bring it back in a work session and talk about it.
Thank you.
We, we do typically get, uh, from the Health Department, when we do these short-term rentals, don't they come out and tell you where the septic tank isn't inspected? Is that typical, or am I wrong?
On the short-term rentals, we asked the applicant to supply us with the operational permit that was done either when the house was constructed. This one looks like it must have had maybe some maintenance because it's nineteen ninety-eight and the house was constructed in seventy-two. So, we do ask them to find that information. If for some reason the property owner cannot, then we will contact the Health Department, and lots of times, the Health Department will find it for us and send it to us.
So, they just give you the permit, there's no inspection or?
There's, there's no inspection, no, sir.
Okay.
Sir, is the applicant here? Does anyone else wish to speak?
The applicant should be here.
Ma'am, do you, you got something you'd like to say?
Hello. Um, my name is Cheryl Ray, and I am the owner and property manager seeking the short-term rental for thirteen twenty-nine Booker T. Washington Highway. Um, I just think that I wanted to-
Will you speak into your mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure that I expressed to the board that my family and I have, my husband's family's been in Rocky Mount, um, for, since the seventeen hundreds. This town is very important to us, and so it's very important for us to take care of this property, but also to help support our community, which is one of the reasons why we were interested in offering this as a short-term rental. We had a lot of business owners and tourists who were seeking housing outside of hotels that we felt like this provided an option for, and we could also help to promote the town of Rocky Mount as an option for additional revenue. It is very important for me. I've spent a lot of time on this house, um, just trying to fix it up. I've put new furniture in it. Is, um, to try and make it something that people would want to be a part of, and so it's very important for me to take care of the property and to make sure I have renters in the property that will also take care of it. I would ideally like to have people that are referred to me or businesses that refer people to me, um, but I do have stipulations through VRBO on rental applicants to make sure that I help to weed out anyone who would not be a good renter. As, um, as she mentioned, we do live next door to the property, and my husband and I will be able to, um, help manage and look after what is going on and maintain the property. On the question of the septic, we do not have any, any more updated data than the nineteen ninety-eight, although I would tell you that we have personally used the property. We haven't had any issues with the septic, and, um, I am hoping that you would grant this application without any additional expense and allow us to manage it if it becomes a problem. I'm looking to get this up and running as quickly as possible.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody got any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open it, uh, uh, open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to this piece of property? Anybody here at all wish to speak to this piece of property? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, uh, open it up to the board. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve. I find that the use will not be substantial detriment to adjacent properties. The character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for short-term tourist rental of the dwelling-owned property with the six conditions recommended by the Planning Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Kirk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tim Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dan Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Marshall Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter, Ryan Carter, hearing to consider an ordinance to the utility license tax.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, uh, for what we have, I do not have a presentation. The, the amendments, the recommended amendments to the utility tax are in your packet. So, essentially, uh, what we have, this is a current section of code. This is not a new, new tax. This has been since the eighties. It's the utility license tax for telephone and, uh, electric and gas utility providers. And so, the tax functions very similar to what would be considered a B-pole tax, and it's on the annual gross receipts of, of the business. It's one-half of one percent. What, um, what we found in, uh, in the last year, year and a half, is that it, the current ordinance is very dated, last updated in nineteen eighty-three. It lacks enforcement capabilities. So, when we presented it to, uh, Mr. Gwynn's office, it was recommended that we update this language with the new code, uh, section from the Commonwealth of Virginia and the applicable stipulation. So, really, what this allows us to do is a couple of things. It amends the language that was a hang-up on some of our enforcement to some of our utility providers, specifically telephone companies. It's more specifically cellphone providers, in paying the annual tax. But it also updates that language to where we would be able to possibly enforce with natural gas that heretofore we have not had in the county. And so, with that, it's really just a simple update of a tax and to more specifically lay out the enforcement provisions, mainly with the Commissioner's Office and the Treasurer's Office, but it allows staff the ability to follow up as needed and remove some language that was creating issues before. So, with that, we, um, it would remain one-half of one percent. It would be an annual. It would be a utility business license tax. A lot of that language remains the same. It would still be due March first of every year based on the previous calendar year of gross receipts. And so, with that, be happy to answer any questions on any detail, but that's the synopsis of what we're looking to do here with the amendment to the utility business license tax.
Okay, you've got the, uh, presentation in your packet. Is there any, uh, questions for Mr. Carter? Anyone? All right, seeing none, then we'll, uh, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, we'll go into, uh, open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to address this amendment to, uh, the utility license tax? Anyone here wish to, uh, address? Come forward if you do. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt amended, uh, amendments to Article eight, License Tax Divisions one, two, and three of the County Code of Ordinances, the utility business license taxes as presented in this summary.
Need a second? Madam Clerk, if you do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Tim Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dan Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Marshall Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right, seeing that, we'll go into our, get ready for our public comment time. We, we start every time, and, uh, I want to reemphasize the rules, uh, of the public comment. We start that at the end of our, uh, public comment, our public hearing, and we go into that. A lot of, a lot of you are not aware, I think, that, uh, the public schools have public comments, uh, section just like we do, and, um, County Administrator, Mr. Whitlow, he's gonna go over the timeline and when all of this happens. Next page over.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll probably see scrolling on the screen for the, for the audience, just, uh, for the sake of the public and so forth, of course, the Board of Supervisors meets the third Tuesday of each month, and that's kind of where we are this evening, and receive public comment in the evening after regular business, and that's what session we're getting ready to go into at six o'clock. A couple of upcoming meetings, reminders, uh, for the general public, uh, there will be a budget work session with the Board of Supervisors this Thursday at three o'clock. Um, the budget is scheduled to be presented, the county budget, on March the fifth in this room at three o'clock. Of course, the board then will meet its regular schedule on March nineteenth at three PM, and then a regular meeting, um, uh, with the board on that Thursday at three PM for work session. In addition, there will be other work sessions, as we'll discuss with the board, with the budget during the month of March, and we'll begin, um, some of those discussions this Thursday. Regarding the school board public hearing, um, public hearings, specifically, the school board will hold a public hearing, uh, for public comment and input on possible school closures. That will be held by the school board located at the Franklin County High School Auditorium, and that's scheduled for this Saturday, February the twenty-fourth at one PM, and then to be followed by the school board's, uh, budget to be presented to the school board regarding the school's budget. That will be held in the East Auditorium of the Benjamin Franklin Middle School at seven thirty PM. And of course, public hearings on the overall county budget, which will include the school budget, uh, will be tentatively scheduled for the week of March the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, potentially likely on March the twenty-fifth, but again, sometime that specific week. It will be published. It will be advertised, so that week of March the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. And then there'll also be another public hearing on the overall county reassessment for the week of April the eighth. So, lots of public input, a lot of public hearings coming up, um, and then the scheduled adoption for the budget and tax rate will be the week of April the eighth, uh, from the board. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, those are just some of the reminders, and again, uh, the public, there's many ways to, uh, also provide public, uh, input to the board in the budget process through the county website, uh, input forms, as well as email, and then, uh, also public comment in any of these public hearings.
Thank you, sir. All right, typically, this is the time when we do public, uh, not public comment, but when we have other matters by supervisors. What I'm asking you, if, if you want to do that tonight, we will, but if you, if you want to digress and wait, I promise you that that's the first thing we will do in our open session or in our workshop on Thursday, is open it for that. But if you want to do it tonight, we will certainly do that. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, uh, due to other obligations on Thursday, I will not be here, so I would like to just, as far as, uh-
If we do one, we'll do them also. If you've got something to go for.
Okay, I just wanted to, uh, let our friends that are in the back that are from Faram for the park, that, um, we've given some discussion to your use, and it looks like everybody agreed the farmer's market's good to go, so we want to let you know that. The other activities, just, uh, stay in touch with us on future activities, and, and we'll address those one at a time. Okay? That's all I had.
Ms. Smith?
Um.
Are you, are you okay with waiting till Thursday?
I can wait.
Or you want to do it?
No, I can wait, certainly.
Thursday?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Take a wait, also.
Anybody else? Can you wait till Thursday, or you want to do it now?
I have one quick thing, Mr.-
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want to state that, um, the Snow Creek community has raised, uh, when I called and checked on the way up here, a little over eighty thousand dollars for the addition on their building for housing, uh, paid staff in Snow Creek, um, and it was, we granted that last year, and they have two paid staff, and they're looking for a place for them to be able to stay overnight, and I would like staff to, uh, put that as a, um, capital, capital need to help them on that in our upcoming budget. That's all I, but it, I thought it was outstanding that that small community with no businesses, that's nothing but people and churches and things like that have raised that sum of money.
It is impressive.
It is very impressive, and it, and it shows their dedication and their want for that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jameson, you, you got something, or can you wait till?
Thursday's fine.
All right, I'll wait till Thursday as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the time, set aside in our meeting for public comment. Many of you may be here to speak regarding to the school budget. Please be advised that the Franklin County School Board has scheduled a public hearing this Saturday, February the twenty-fourth at one at Franklin County High School Auditorium on the possible closure of Burnt Chimney Elementary and Henry Elementary, and will hold a public hearing on Monday, February the twenty-sixth at seven thirty at the Benjamin Franklin Middle School East Auditorium on their FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. School East Auditorium on their FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We now move on into public comment period. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to this responsibility of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and that's going to be strictly adhered to. The mic will be cut off, and the beeper will go. At that time, we're not going to go over the three-minute for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not on individual board members or employees of the board or the county. Personal attacks and insults, profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and are not a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question-and-answer session, and board members will not answer questions during the public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. With that being said, we'll go ahead and start. Madam Clerk, who's the first speaker?
Jessica O'Neil.
When you come, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Jessica O'Neil.
You need to come forward, state your name and address for the record. Jessica O'Neil. Jessica O'Neil. Apparently, she didn't come. Who's next?
Keith Johnson?
Keith Johnson.
I have comments printed free zone. Thank you, Keith Johnson, one ninety Leaning Oak Road in Boons Mill. Thank you for this opportunity. Learned about the false accusation made by school officials involving me. I never can, I never called anyone there or anywhere else a pedophile or any other childish names.
Speaking to you, Mike, sir?
I never called anyone a pedophile or any other childish names. That was not, that was completely false, completely fabricated. I only spoke to two administrators, so it's easy to find out who's responsible for the lies. The problems I experienced with school administration and the school board may be an important clue to understand why so many parents have removed their children from public school. Depending on who you ask, it appears the school system has lost over two thousand students in the past several years. That is about one-quarter of the student population. Dr. Sears was quoted in the paper predicting an additional loss, predicting an additional seven percent, which would be about five hundred more students. Why are so many parents removing their children from Franklin County public schools and putting them in homeschooling or private school? What do parents want to see changed in the school so they will want to return their children to public school? Our school is not asking these questions. Evidence suggests our school administration is completely unresponsive to our community. Now, we could debate whether or not completely is too strong a term, but that's been my experience. For two years, several people have been communicating and presenting to the school board members their concerns to have pornography removed from our schools. I challenged fourteen books last October. As of today, eleven of those books are still available and/or are in a checked-out status. I gave a flyer to you last month with four books with vulgar excerpts. Three of the four are still in the school system. Two are still available for checkout, and one has an administrative distinction. So you have a lot on your plate now, and you are not required to get involved in these matters, but the school is a major part of your budget, and it's an important part of our community. Many things in our community directly or indirectly revolve around school activities. So how can we justify giving the school more money without a plan to stop the bleeding, to stop losing students from our schools? Two fundamental changes I repeatedly recommended to the school board. Franklin County should end the relationship with the American Library Association. This organization is sending the pornographic titles to our schools. There are several other options that do not distribute pornography, so they can use another organization. Create a volunteer citizens group to review books and other materials before placement into schools. I have attached comments, I have attached comments to your handout that were my comments to the school board last week. We need, we desperately need your leadership involving the school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Bud Hipsley?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bud Hipsley. I live at nine eighty-one Circle Creek Road in Snow Creek area of Penhook.
Thank you.
My wife and I have lived there for the past eleven years. Our seven children are all grown now with successful careers in their own children. In recent weeks, we've heard three ideas that we don't believe are in the best interests of Franklin County children. Lengthening the duration of bus, school bus routes, especially for our youngest students. Transporting elementary students, the ones with the most impressionable minds on the same buses as secondary schools kids. An imposition of a four-day school week on families with a five-day work week. Any of these changes is likely to cause some families to either move out of Franklin County or leave our public schools in favor of homeschooling or private schools, responses which could send our future school district enrollments into a tailspin. Instead, we strongly encourage the school district and this board of supervisors to do everything in your collective power to keep grade schools as neighborhood-oriented as possible. At a recent meeting we heard of this board, we heard some members imply a willingness to help the school district get through the immediate shortfall in state funding. We strongly support that attitude, and we encourage this board to quickly collaborate with the school board to do two things. First, agree on a temporary increase in financial support from the county, but only in combination with selective cost reductions by the school district to allow delaying for at least one year a decision to close any elementary school. Second, immediately establish a working group with representatives from county government, the school district, and citizens of Franklin County who do not work for either the county or the school district. The Evergreen study that you have is primarily focused inward on what our school district facilities and costs are today. We need to see other studies, ones that focus more on external factors that can impact our county and student populations. For instance, are the county's projections for Summit Business Park and other economic development initiatives factored into forecasts of our future student population? Finally, we implore you to deliberate and vote based on what's best. Not for maintaining a fixed staffing level in the schools, not for adhering to a fixed tax rate, but best for the social, emotional, and educational growth of our children who represent the future of this county, this Commonwealth, and this nation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Amos Denton?
I wrote this on the way here, so I didn't have time to make copies to give to all y'all, but hope that's all right. My name's Amos Denton.
State your name and address, sir. State your name and address for the record.
I'm a little slow. I was getting there. Amos Denton, eighty-one Malkin Bird Road, Boons Mill, Virginia. I stand here today not just as a citizen of this county, but as a resident involved with a media company, which is a media group that was formed to give a voice to the people who feel they're not being heard and to bring transparency and accountability to the local government. Far too long, this board has gotten comfortable with making backroom deals, getting them a pat on the back in their social circles instead of reducing the tax burden of county residents. We feel a motion from a board member to adopt term limits is the best way to get transparency and accountability from every local board. This board has and will rubber-stamp every budget that comes before them and raise the taxes to cover that budget with no consideration of the amount of waste included in the budget. It was made clear at the February eighth meeting, this board fully intended to raise taxes to cover the budget with no consideration of the amount of waste that y'all never considered cutting from a budget. We as residents demand transparency before a porkfield budget is passed. This board at its October seventeenth meeting voted to allow a hundred-acre private golf course at Smith Mountain Lake to be taxed at the same rate as a cow pasture, while knowing that the golf course is receiving massive income on golfing fees. We need transparency and accountability from this board. It was stated on February eighth meeting, quote, "If Richmond would just get out of the way and let us handle it, it would be okay," end quote. Well, due to the board's ability to facilitate all manner of questionable deals, including tax breaks for multimillion-dollar golf courses, we're thankful Richmond offers at least some protection from local government. We elect this board. We can bring accountability to this board through the ballot box. We feel there should be term limits adopted to this board, which brings transparency and accountability. We feel to be transparent, we the residents should be able to see each board member's vote on each issue after each meeting, not just when all of y'all agree, when you disagree. We live here. We care. It's our community. We elected y'all to speak for us. It's time for y'all to do so. I have thirteen seconds left. I thought it was going to take me a lot longer than that, and I'm not real sure where to go. Man, do the right thing. We all care. We all here together. We're in the same ship. If it goes down, it goes down. But let's all try to make sure it don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Winch?
My name is Simon Winch, from two eighty Woodwinds Road, Callaway, Virginia. You're going to hear a lot this evening, I'm sure, about tax assessments. That's a bit of a red herring. We're also going to be discussing the tax rate that will be applied subsequent to the tax assessments. Net neutral would be forty-one cents, I believe. And if we're going higher than that, why didn't you do it in the last three or four years? I think that's been irresponsible to start with. And then we're going to talk about zoning. We do not want additional zoning here. It's that simple. Do not do it. We're going to watch every single vote of every single person that votes for zoning other than what is currently zoned. We do not want zoning. Do I need to say that one more time? We do not want zoning. As far as financial responsibility and fiscal responsibility, we've seen upwards of twenty-plus million thrown at Summit View and the Sink Farm Development, which includes an eight-point-nine million-dollar investment in a connecting road, and we have nothing to show for it. You light that place up like JFK Runway, and it's an absolute disgrace. We've told you about this before. It is shocking. The firehouse in Glade Hill, it was budgeted for five million dollars. As far as I can figure out, it's seven-plus million dollars, and this is fiscal responsibility from the board? You've got to be kidding me. I also hear that we have a significant amount of money stuck away in a fund that could be as much as sixty million dollars. Someone says twenty million. Someone says forty million. I hear sixty million. That's the number I'm going to use. This actually gives Richmond a pretty fine excuse to lower school board funding because we are then, we are seen as a fiscally rich county, and we are not. That budget you need to take responsibility for, and shirking it on the school board isn't going to cut it. We demand accountability and responsibility from you guys. Term limits, damn straight. We demand the first, we also demand that the first page of these minutes have you and your votes allocated to you and the vote that you made. We need to see who votes. That way, we can affect the ballot when we are not in agreement. Thank you.
Billy Riddle?
Hello, my name is William Riddle. I am sixty-five Herbert Street here in Rocky Mount. I probably won't take three minutes out of speech written, but President Lincoln and General Cornwallis, I think, nailed home a lot of the things I wanted to say. I just, it was the first time in a long time I've been to a Board of Supervisors meeting since probably my grandpa was serving here twenty, thirty years ago when I was in high school and had to show up here for, for a reporter or some nonsense. It was about as boring then as it is now. Nothing much has really changed. It's, it's pretty disgusting. The first thirty or so minutes we sat here in some, I don't know if she's still here, but a couple of nice ladies came up here and put themselves at the mercy of you all for fifteen or twenty minutes, so she could do, you know, do what she wanted to do with her own personal property. And I don't, I don't know how it's gotten to the point in time where somebody feels like they should go stand in front of the Senate Room to be able to rent their property out to somebody, but, but it needs to be fixed. And that's just a microcosm of the rest of the problems. Because the thing is, is you've got a nice little system going on here where you come up here and you have the ability to blame Richmond or DC. Your DC and Richmond blames y'all, y'all blame the town, and town blames the school board. It's just a circular game of everybody taking blame. And meanwhile, all your decisions make it harder and harder for the common person to make it to these meetings and voice their concerns because they're too busy picking up double shifts just to pay for gas and groceries. So I don't really know how it's going to get done on y'all's end, but it needs to get fixed. Accountability needs to start being the priority for you all, for the town, for the school board, for everybody, because the citizens, you know, we're about fed up with it. I think we're at a boiling point. It's not all y'all's fault. I think there's a lot to go around, but you all are in the position to try and fix it. And either we can fix it right here, or we as the citizens can fix it another way and remove every single one of you from your seats. We'll go as far as we have to to make sure that happens. So please, moving forward, accountability, transparency. Hey, Holland Purdue here in town, transparent. He's out serving at his establishment. He's out doing the trivia nights there at Living Purdue. He's out making comments. Get out there amongst the community and be visible. Thank you.
Rebecca Saunders?
Rebecca Saunders, two four five Nature Zone Road, Faram. First, I'd just like to say thank you all so much for supporting the Faram Farmer's Market. I cannot tell you how much this means to our community. To that, I would like to say, for the last year I've came and spoken at a majority of these public hearings about my community, Faram, and how important it is for us to have a public space open and accessible to all. In September, our nonprofit group, Friends of Faram Park, responded to the county's RFP for the eighty-four acre parcel in Faram. Our plan is a comprehensive one that takes into account the need for attainable housing in our area, along with the need for Faram to have public space, and provides great solutions for both. I am here today to encourage you all once again to consider not just the desires of the county, but the needs of our community, who will be the ones most deeply impacted by the choices you make on this property. Our nonprofit is dedicated to ensuring that we provide our community with as much opportunities as possible. Recreation, events, entertainment, habitat preservation, economic growth, and housing options that actually fit the needs of the people who live here, at no cost to the county or the taxpayers. We are working hard to showcase all the things that make Faram amazing, but we need your help. As I've said, every time I've been up here, there is no public space in Faram, and I cannot stress enough how detrimental this has been to our community's growth. Our farmer's market, hosted by Faram Forward, is highly successful and growing every year, but finding a location to host, it has been challenging, to say the least. To have a permanent location for our market would itself be an amazing opportunity, but to also have space for families in our community to gather, to have picnics, graduations, birthday parties, hike, walk, and play with their kids at a playground that's just right around the corner from where they live, all while being fully ADA accessible. It would benefit our community in ways I can't even begin to describe. Your decision on what happens to this property will impact what Faram looks like for the next decade and beyond. You have three dedicated, eager, and willing community organizations in Friends of Faram Park, Faram Forward, and Reba Dillon's Franklin County Recreational Development Nonprofit, all ready and willing to... all ready and willing to do whatever it takes to help Faram shine. Give us the chance to show you what Faram can do. Thank you again.
Hi, I wanna echo, uh, well, first off, Ed Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Faram. Uh, I wanna echo my wife's, thank you guys so much for getting us the, uh, access to the property. It means a lot to a lot of folks in our community. Um, I figured I'd write this down, cause I've been a little scatterbrained today, so bear with me here. Um, tonight, I would like to speed, speak about two of the greatest resources that Franklin County has, and that is our Parks and Rec Department and our Tourism Department. They do so very much with so very little, and I'm asking something that's probably gonna be very unpopular this evening, but I would like for you guys to increase your budget to those two departments, because they do so very much with so very little, and yet the return for our communities, and I'd be inclined to say that pretty much everyone out here has either been to the Ag Fair or the, um, the Christmas, uh, Lights Event. There's so many things they do for our community, and I think we should be supporting them, and I think the return on our investment would be pretty substantial. You look at the bike race that was here last year, it brought in a million dollars of revenue into our community. That is huge for something that required no investment from the county. And I think we could, if we give them a bit more money and a bit more resources, I think we can do a lot of amazing things in this county. Um, you know, I was talking to Paul, and he mentioned that he had to let one of his guys leave for another position inside of Franklin County, because he just couldn't offer the same wages. Those guys bust their butts every time, like the Ag Fair, they're out there until three o'clock in the morning after everybody else is packed up, working to get everything cleaned up. Now, I think that's ridiculous that we could let one of those folks go when they do as much as they do. Those guys are out there every weekend, getting ready for the Christmas lights, putting up stuff, and I think we should be supporting them with a little bit more of the budget. I don't think it's gonna make a huge difference, uh, as far as the bottom line goes, but I think our return is gonna be substantial. Um, that's all I've got, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
How are y'all tonight? My name is Sandra Young, and I live at twenty-four seventy-two Doe Run Road, Rocky Mount, Virginia. The issues that I, I, that really gets on my nerves about all of this is, like, the other guys brought up, about all this property and stuff that Franklin County has bought, and we're not utilizing it. We're paying taxes on it, and y'all are not showing any return on it. You got Summit View, to go with Summit View, you bought Pres- Pleasant Breeze Road, you, on East Court Street, y'all bought Yadda Produce Farm up there to go with the high school. Y'all not renting it out, I don't guess, for nobody to use for farming, or none of that. No money coming in off of it. Also, when I get my personal property taxes, I pay thirty-four dollars and fifty cents for every vehicle I've got. Utility trailers and a whole nine yards. Uh, it was, y'all call it a license fee. Used to be a county sticker. That was originally, started off, and it was ten dollars, and then it went to fifteen, and then it went to twenty dollars. And it was designed for, to raise taxes for the schools. Y'all come across with board, y'all, y'all wanting to close these schools. What are y'all doing with all this money? I'm not the only one in a county that's paying taxes on four or five vehicles and stuff. I feel like all of y'all have got two or three vehicles sitting in y'all's yard, too. So if that money's not going to the schools now, what are y'all doing with it? Does the Board of Supervisors make sure that the Virginia lottery money that's supposed to come in here going to the schools? That it is going to the schools, or is it going in somebody's pocket? That's all I've got. I mean, it's a lot of answers needs to be, to come forth from, from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Corcoran Tyson. I live twenty-nine eleven Algoma Road in Boones Mill. And, um, just a few quick comments and injections on a few things. First of all, and we've all been talking about the property taxes, um, I moved here ten years ago. Uh, since I moved here ten years ago from Eastern Carolina, my property taxes have doubled. Uh, it looks like, according to every information piece that I've been able to see, that that's gonna be going up at least thirty to forty percent more. Um, that, I don't think, given what the money is going to here in the county, is, uh, a viable option for most of the property owners in this county. And as far as the schools go, um, I read the county budget, and I think a hundred and nine million dollars of the county budget goes to the schools, which, if the population of the schools is correct, which I think was last stated at five thousand six hundred and nineteen students in the county, uh, that means each student is getting approximately eighteen thousand dollars with county money. Uh, they're getting another twenty-seven hundred dollars a year from the state, and another fifty-six hundred dollars a year from the Fed. So that means each student is getting twenty-five thousand to be sitting in a schoolroom seat. So, given the number of students, for instance, in Franklin County High School, which is roughly two thousand, um, that school is bringing approximately ten million dollars from the county, the state, and the Fed. So, I'm trying to figure out, with this, with teacher salaries being what they are, administrator salaries, school bus costs, um, clerical, administrative, um, if I take all the schools in the county and multiply those numbers, we're somewhere in the twenty-four million dollars over what the schools are actually supposed to be generating. So my question is, where's that money going? Uh, my second observation is regards to the, the Summit View property, uh, eight-point-one million dollars, which I've driven over there many times, it's not doing anything. Uh, the county may wanna consider selling that land, and maybe to a, to a developer to build townhouses or apartments, that, uh, the residents there will be generating tax revenue, cause there sure isn't anything going on over there. Um, and finally, um, one thing that I also wanted to mention, veering back to taxes, was, um, probably forty percent of county are over fifty-five years old and have no connection with the schools. So, like they do in Campbell County, the, the Board may wanna consider some type of exemption for those who are retired, or disabled, or over the age of sixty-five. Uh, that would be more of an equitable distribution of income.
Joseph McClure?
If I have two properties, do I get six minutes?
No, sir, three minutes.
My name is Joe McClure. My beautiful wife, Yvonne, and I have lived at Fifty Harmony Road for forty-three years. Uh, our, um, my wife's, uh, family goes back to the Boytnotts, uh, in Boones Mill before, uh, last century. I had a relative that ties me to the Rays. Anyway, uh, we grew up in Roanoke, and after the Navy, I, uh, bought a house in Roanoke, and, uh, the things were going sour in Roanoke is, in regard to how they, um, uh, taxed and that sort of thing. So we moved to Roanoke County. That began to change. Uh, we were redistricted into a, a school that we weren't, uh, comfortable with. So at that time, we, uh, moved over here to Franklin County. My wife and I are seventy-three years old, we're in a season of life where we're, uh, forced to live on fixed income, and we've been able to do so, and thank God, we've been able to live debt-free for some years now. I do that by living in a very small frame house with hardboard siding, not giving my wife the big, uh, kitchen with granite, uh, countertops she'd like, that sort of thing. Anyway, I live within my means, and I feel like government should live within their means. And I understand likewise, that, in today's economy, that's very, very difficult to do, and you've got hard choices to make, uh, in regard to these things. Um, I heard at the last meeting on the eighth, that you had, uh, two thousand less students, maybe, and four less teachers since that time. I've had to make hard choices in my life to stay debt-free. Uh, when my workplace was closed, um, oh, first of all, I was laid off at the railroad in Roanoke because of economic, uh, downturns with, uh, fuel crisis in seventy-four, that sort of thing. Uh, when my workplace in Roanoke was closed, I had to, uh, work in Charlotte for several years. I had to do what I had to do, and so, we're still here, we're still kicking, but, uh, some of the choices you make are gonna affect how, not just my wife and I, but folks in this season of life also, um, you know, are able to get by. Um, I don't enjoy parks. I, I do, but I can't, because I've had an ankle, two knees, a hip replaced, and I need more done, so I'm really not able to get out and enjoy. We're too busy going to doctor's appointments. Um, I'm not in real good order here, and I see I've got fourteen seconds left. I do have an appointment with the Assessor's Office tomorrow, so I'm gonna do what I can, you know, on my part. Uh, my property, um, uh, the second, okay.
Gentlemen, ladies, my name is Michael Hall. I live at eleven-fifty Country Ridge Road, in Snow Creek District. Supervisor Mitchell was just touting a little bit ago about the eighty thousand dollars that was raised in there. Um, I have no idea where that's going to, I hope it's going to the schools. The gentleman spoke about living within our means. The way things are going, my means don't mean much. It's just going downhill. And the more that you wanna put rezoning, I have a small farm, I have horses, I have dogs and everything else, but it's getting harder and harder to take care of everybody, feed everybody, make sure everybody's healthy, happy. Uh, I got, uh, dog licenses, uh, all kinds of taxes, little stuff, it adds up. So when you rezone, and you put me in a different category, or even my neighbors into a different category, my price, my property value goes up, my property taxes go up. I can't sustain myself at this rate. So I'm asking you to please reconsider, when you make decisions like this, how it's gonna affect us little guys down here that are just trying to work and live.
Kathy Cummings, three-five-seven-nine Kemp Ford Road, Union Hall, Virginia. Happy Black History Month. It will take many Black History Months to catch America up on the history which has been left out of our public education. In fact, those of us over sixty years old, educated on Virginia history in public schools, who likely taught the lost cause version of the Civil War. Franklin County's own Jubal Early was a prominent spokesperson for the lost cause. These are his words, quote, "Reason, common sense, true humanity to the black, as well as the safety of the white race, require that the inferior race should be kept in a state of subordination," unquote. Modern historians believe that Jubal Early's views fermented racial hatred. The Jubal Early chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy erected the original monument in front of the Franklin County Courthouse in nineteen-ten. A few years prior, nineteen-oh-one to nineteen-oh-two, the Virginia General Assembly convened a Constitutional Convention to reform the post-Civil War State Constitution. They revised the Constitution deliberately to disenfranchise black voters. Between nineteen-hundred and nineteen-twenty, the United Daughters of the Confederacy erected more monuments to the Confederacy than during any other period of time, with the greatest number at exactly the same time Franklin County's was erected. These Daughters of Confederates were determined to restore the social dichotomies and disparities of the good old days, when black Americans had no civil or human rights, and when white people wielded power in all aspects of society. The UDC vigorously promoted the lost cause ideology in school textbooks. They were very successful. But this month, in a move prompted by a Virginia Beach teenager, the Virginia Senate advanced a bill to remove the United Daughters of the Confederacy from the list of nonprofits exempt from real estate and personal property taxes in the Virginia State Code. Last month, I suggested that Franklin County erect signage which tells the whole story behind our Confederate monument. These facts need to be made public, because they too are part of history. If the Confederate monument is to remain, the community needs to be informed of the complete story behind its existence. Alternatively, relocating a Confederate statue does not erase history, it is simply changing who we choose to honor in front of the courthouse.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I do not have a speech. Uh, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, I was hoping I'd get answers. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Robin Medovich, uh, two-fifty-five Periwinkle Road in Manita. Um, I wanted to ask a question, I was hoping I'd get an answer, but, uh, I, this is the first meeting I've ever attended here. Uh, but, I, like a lot of people here, not happy with the assessment that I got on my house, uh, talking to a number of people, it ranged anywhere from twenty to almost three-fifth, uh, almost a hundred percent increase. And with the schools shutting down, possibly two, maybe three, it just seems like you got your hands in both my pockets. Uh, and there's a strong rumor that if these schools do get closed down, um, that they might be busing some of the illegals here, and you're getting federal money. That's different people saying it. So that was my question, but I know you can't answer that, but I, for one, would be opposed to that. Uh, that was it.
Good evening. My name is Donna Hodges. My address is twenty-three oh-one Doe Run Road, Rocky Mount, Virginia. Okay. Okay, okay, no problem. So, I've been a resident of Rocky Mount for twenty-plus years. I moved from Roanoke, Virginia, where taxes were high, the cost of living was ridiculous, as it is continuing to go that way now. And unfortunately, I did, and I was one of those parents that pulled my child from the schools. And it's because of the things that are going on in the schools. We lack teaching, we are worried about other things that the parents should really worry about. So we did that, and my son is doing amazingly in school, in Liberty Online Academy, and he's got a good, um, head on his shoulders, and he's learning from his parents, the way it should be. But also, um, unfortunately, we got the assessment as well. And if this is correct, our taxes are gonna go up ninety-eight percent. I'm not a millionaire, no one else in here is. We can't afford that. This is incorrect. This is on a higher budget of, I don't know who. It's not fair, it is not right, and I really implore you guys to, and women, to really rethink this for the residents. You know, this day and age, things are so tough and tight, even for me in my forties. I have twenty-nine chickens now because of the budgets. You know, I'm raising my own eggs, I'm taking care of my animals, I am doing gardening and everything else, which I love, but it's- and everything else, which I love, but it's because of lack of money, you know? And I really think you guys need to think about that. What about the elderly community that are on fixed incomes? They can't afford this. No one can. And, you know, I think that we all need to be realistic and transparent in budgets. If I've got to budget my Amazon, then y'all need to budget this budget. So that's all I have. I want to thank you for your time, and really think about the residents of Franklin County.
My name is Eric Anspall. I live in the Blackwater District. I'm at 429 Creighton Drive, Rocky Mount. I'm sharing my comments with you as President of the Franklin County NAACP, and guess what? I have some exciting news to share with you all. We've been chosen as one of the finalists for the Mellon Foundation Grant Program: Monuments Across Virginia. Our grant proposal is titled "Raising the Shade: Franklin County, Virginia, 1850 to 1910." Raising the Shade challenges our community with the assertion that monuments are statements of power and presence in public, as well as arguments about what's important. A courthouse monument to the lost cause represents an attempt to extinguish the extraordinary post-Civil War reconstruction efforts of Black Americans who participated in progressive governance and sought to improve the lives of all people, with new public schools, roads, and hospitals. We will conduct a year-long effort to inform and educate all who will listen about an opportunity in this county to heal racial division through respectful truth-telling. Stories of both Black and white people in Appalachian Virginia from 1850 to 1910 will be acknowledged in conversations in a community charrette, and a charrette is a meeting of stakeholders in a project who are attempting to resolve conflicts and map solutions. This charrette process will also be preserved in a documentary. The charrette itself will serve as a monument, an inspirational foundation for a stronger, more unified community moving forward. And additionally, we will uncover hidden history, and we will commemorate the stories of 70 Black men who left Franklin County and became United States colored troops to fight for the Union. Black citizens will collaborate with the designated sculptor to design a seven-foot bronze figure which will memorialize the determination of those Black soldiers in the South and standing dignified for their fight for freedom and human rights. We have been in communication, and we are in communication, with the Virginia Tech team who are assigned to review these grants, and they're reviewing our project proposal, excuse me, proposal, and we'll be submitting our final project plans and budget to that team by March 4th deadline. We are in conversation with the town of Rocky Mount about a possible location of the monument, and we are hopeful that our project, Raising the Shade: Franklin County, 1850 to 1910, will be awarded a grant. We will know sometime in April the outcome, and if a grant is awarded, the Franklin County NAACP and its partners will eagerly seek your endorsement. And I just want to say, we've been hearing a lot about budget tonight. We get this grant, it's not going to cost the county a dime, not a dime. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Glenna Moore.
Glenna Hawkins-Moore, Scenic River Drive, Snow Creek District. It's Black History Month, which translates to white history as well. During the 1960s and 70s, the Franklin County NAACP organized peaceful protests against under, excuse me, on county governing boards and unfair unemployment practices at businesses in the county seat. It was a time when many racial barriers were brought down, and Franklin County Black citizens were relieved of decades of Jim Crow policies. In 1971, the school board agreed with NAACP leadership to establish an at-large position to create an African-American voice and presence on public school issues. The first Black appointee was Posey Lemon. Subsequently, Charles Edwards Sr. and William O. Helm were appointed. Mr. Helm retired in 2014 after 32 years of service. He never failed to be re-elected. The last African-American elected to the at-large position was Penny Blue. Carletta Whiting is the most recent African-American on the board. The military officers assigned to Rocky Mount in 1867 during Reconstruction after the Civil War reported that the citizens of Rocky Mount discouraged the newly freed Blacks from flying the American flag. 100 years later, the Rocky Mount Town Council's first person of color was Wade Phelps, owner of Midway Cleaners, elected in 1970. After 15 years of service, Councilman Phelps died in 1985. His wife Dorothy was appointed to complete his term from 1985 to 1988, making her the first African-American woman on the council. In 1996, Robert Elmore Ray Sr. became the third Black Councilman. From 2001 to 2008, Sadie Tuning was the fourth Black council member. Billy Stockton ran and won a seat on council in 2012 after retiring from a 31-year career with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department, becoming the fifth African-American Councilman. On July 2nd, 2019, Billy was appointed as the town's first Black vice mayor. Most recently, Ralph Casey became Number Six when he was appointed to complete Bobby Cundas' term, and later to be elected in November of 2022. The county lost a real warrior for racial fairness Sunday afternoon, when Mr. William Oliver Helm Jr. died peacefully. His leadership in many community organizations will be sorely missed. I appreciate and celebrate the racial and gender diversity of two Franklin County towns.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other speakers.
Is there anyone else here who wish to address the board? Come forward, please, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joel Long. I live on Carolina Springs here in Franklin County. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but it didn't escape my attention that one of the previous speakers mentioned in October of last year, this board, with what I think is one exception, who no longer sits on the board, voted for a high-end golf course at Smith Mountain Lake to be taxed as a cow pasture. Vacant land, there's a space use agreement. You guys agreed to it. They're being taxed at an exorbitantly low rate. It's a for-profit business. None of us in this room go to that country club. It's called the waterfront, if you don't remember. I have a little bit of a grievance personally with my property being taxed at the normal rate, because I've got to come up with it. Last year, just my business tax was about $30,000. I didn't get a discount, but I'm not the waterfront realty company. I'm not Ron Willard. I don't strike deals with you guys. Some of y'all are sitting up here pretty smug-faced, for now. I want you to consider a little bit, when you look at that budget, you're going to match the budget. It's supposed to be revenue-neutral, according to the recent reassessments. So, in fairness to the rest of the citizens of this county, I do not think that you can sit there with a straight face and in good conscience, first vote for a significant, and I'm talking one-tenth, you're taxing the waterfront realty at $200,000 on a two-plus million-dollar property. We don't get that kind of break. I don't think it's fair to raise our tax rate. Consider carefully. That's all I got.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else like to come forward and address the board? Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your interest in the county government. I appreciate it. The board will stand adjourned until February 22nd at 2:00 p.m. for Board Ben Leighton at 3:00. Thank you.